It's six o'clock and at this time I will call the August 13th, 2019 Auburn Planning Board Meeting to order. On our agenda first, we have a roll call. Before we begin with the roll call, I will note that Matthew Duval is absent tonight. And four members have not been informed, Mr. Dustin Booton has stepped down, so we now have two open spots. But to that end, I'll begin on my far left.
John Engler.
Sam Scoggan.
Brian Carrier.
Evan Seer.
Steven Martelli.
Katie Boss.
Before we begin, it's important to note that Mr. Engler is an associate member. However, tonight, we have a full member absent, so Mr. Engler will be elevated to a full member of the board. This means that he has not only the right to engage in the discussion, but also to make motions and vote on those motions. The next item on our agenda are the minutes of the June 11th, 2019, and July 9th, 2019 meetings of the planning board. Is there a motion to approve? There's a motion to approve, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Our next item is a public hearing, so that members of the audience understand how we conduct public hearings at the planning board. The planning board will hear a report from the staff. During that report, the planning board may ask questions of the staff. When the staff report is done, we will ask the applicant or an agent of the applicant to come forward and share any additional information that they believe is pertinent to the topic. The planning board may ask questions of the applicant or their agent at that time. After the applicant or agent has had a chance to speak with the board, the board will open the public input section of the hearing. That is when we will expect to hear from anyone that would like to add comment. We'll ask that you come forward, that you sit, that you speak clearly into the mic, and begin by stating your name and address, and I'll remind you of that when we get to that section. When the public section has ceased, we will close, or when there's no more public comment, we'll close that part of the public hearing. The board will debate, and at that time, we will decide how we'd like to move forward, either with motions, to accept, reject, or table for future discussion. So, to that end, are we ready for our staff report? All right, our first public hearing is for a proposed 2,397 square foot expansion to an existing 7,144 square foot town fair tire building at 755 Turner Street, parcel ID number 280-011, in the general business zoning district.
So Town Fair Tire submitted an application for a special exception site plan review to add an addition on to their existing building, which is adjacent to the Auburn Mall property. The automobile repair and service stations are permissible in the general business district as long as they're approved by the planning board as a special exception. In this case, Town Fair Tire was originally approved by the board in 2010, but because the addition is more than 10% of the existing footprint, it's required to come back before the planning board as an amendment. We reviewed this proposal with department heads, and the only concern that really came up was in regards to making sure there's a sprinkler system in the building, and it sounds like this has already been addressed with the plan. So as we discussed in your memo, it appears to be pretty straightforward. They're applying to DEP for a minor revision to change the lot configuration and to add an additional, I think it's 194 square feet of impervious area. So we recommend in your memo that as a condition of approval, that they provide a copy of the approved DEP amendment before the start of construction. So other than that, we recommend that you vote in favor of the application with that one condition.
Is the addition of impervious land specific to the building itself? I guess I'm not seeing that the parking lot is getting bigger, but that requirement is triggered because the building's getting larger? So in essence, they're not really increasing their actual impervious area, but it is in addition to a type separate than a type that's there?
Yeah, and I don't know if I can pull up the image on here, probably. Doesn't. Well, so you can see there's a little bit of plantings that are in, I believe it's this side of the property, and the applicant may be able to elaborate more on what they're removing for, or taking for impervious, but I believe it's, there may be a tiny area that's already existing that's not pavement, but I would recommend they elaborate further on that piece of it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board?
This is going to increase their storefrontage for sales floor?
I believe the primary intent was for storage, warehousing, but possibly.
If I'm reading the plans right, it looks like there's going to be a removal of parking spaces as well as a pedestrian, pedestrian walking path at the, I guess, sort of where this, the back end of this yellow truck is, that we're seeing in the bottom, right?
Correct. The perimeter lip, yeah.
So those parking spaces are being removed as well as that pedestrian walk along that side of the building?
Yes, but it will be reinstalled at the rear of the extension.
Okay, I guess I'm not seeing that on the site plans that we provided, but we can have that discussion.
Yeah, they're just going to move the storefront out 20 feet or so.
Yeah, I guess I was just asking because it looks as though it's removing something that's existing. And I guess my last question would be, I'm assuming that you would tell us whether or not this reduces the number of parking spaces below the required number of parking spaces for this type of business?
Yeah, they're all set with their, they exceed the parking requirements, even with removing the parking spaces for the addition.
Okay, so even removing those parking spaces, they still exceed the?
Exceed the parking requirements.
Parking requirements, okay.
I think we might have done a breakdown on that in the memo.
I believe it went from 67 down to 49.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, and the requirement is 32 parking spaces, I believe.
It is a combined parcel, so there is parking available within the entire property.
Yeah, I would assume that they have an agreement. I'm just trying to ask the questions that I think are going to be asked here. If there are no more questions from the board, at this point, we'd like to invite the applicant or an agent for the applicant to come forward. Please sit here at the mic, state your name and the capacity in which you're here.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Curtis Newfeld with Sight Lines at Brunswick, Maine, representing Town Fair Tire. Their regional development manager had prior commitments in Vermont, so I'm flying solo tonight. The intention for the addition is primarily to add two service space on the back of the building. Because they want to square it off with the building, there will be a small increase in the service, or I'm sorry, the sales area, but they're really looking to expand those two service space, which would be on the back of the building. The 194 square feet of landscaped area losses, the, you see there's a landscape island on the right side of the screen. There's one on the backside of that parking lot, which is impacted by the building. So that's primarily where the loss of pervious area is occurring. But this front island will remain, and again, the building addition is on the northerly side, which, as seen from the roadways, is pretty much screened by the existing building. The facade will be brick to match the existing, and there will be those spaces lost adjacent, but as was already discussed, fortunately for them, they have more than they need, even with the shared parking arrangements onsite.
How much time were you able to spend at the site?
I'm sorry?
When you were, I'm assuming that you are helping them draw the plans and so on and so forth?
Yes, sir.
So you were there.
Yep.
What kind of pedestrian traffic did you see on that pathway at the rear of the building that's going to be removed?
Really, none. Their operation is typically to, people will leave their car wherever, but they move cars to the rear of the site to queue them up for the service. So it's really only employees going from the building, and it's really, they go out the back overhead doors, or there's a man door, that they go out to bring vehicles in, service them if they have something to go to. The tire cage out back, they would go through the building. So the sidewalk on that side really doesn't serve much for customer traffic, if you will.
So those parking spots that are currently to the north of the building right now are being used by staff as well as sort of holding area for vehicles that are going to be serviced?
Those would be customers parked there, but they have those three rows of parking on the north side towards the mall.
Yeah, those are what I'm talking about, the parking on the north side.
Yes.
I know, I have a plan in front of me to show you.
Sure.
I guess here... Yeah, so here, yeah, it's looking, yeah, it's on the north side that this addition is being placed, right?
Yes, sir.
And so here, this would be the spots sort of above the building, so to speak.
Do you want me to be Vanna?
Yeah, so the, right, the spots above the building, what you're saying is those are currently used primarily by?
Those are customers would typically drop them off there, or once they're serviced, they would park them on the side of the building. But you see, the three rows above that are empty, so the intent was that they would be able to utilize those additional rows for the same purpose.
Okay.
And the front parking, I'm sorry, the front sidewalk will continue to exist so they can come down from those spaces right in front of the building.
What sort of exterior lights are going to be on that side of the building?
They will match the existing wall packs that are there. They're a full cutoff LED wall pack, I believe there's two of them on that side, maybe three, just to illuminate that drive aisle. There's already pole lights, you can actually see them there next to the white and yellow truck, and then that other parking lot island that illuminates the parking stalls, but to make sure that that drive aisle continues to be illuminated, those lights will take care of that.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. In terms of the staff memo and the recommendation for the condition, that's absolutely understandable and acceptable. Thank you.
At this time, I'd be looking for a motion from the board to open the public input section of the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second has been made to my right. All those in favor? We've now opened the public input section of this hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this topic, please come forward, speak clearly into the mic as these meetings are recorded, begin by stating your name and Seeing that there are no members of the public that wish to comment at this time, I'd be looking for a motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right, so at this time, the board will discuss amongst itself. We may ask additional questions of staff or the applicant. My initial thought is that this project is a good one. My only concern being that there is no real safe way for pedestrians to go from those far north parking lots to the front of the building without having to, I guess, cross through a parking lot. There's no, there's no direct line to a sidewalk. And...
You don't have a high pedestrian area, you know, it's not like people walking up and down the sidewalk going to work or anything.
Yeah, I assume that the sidewalk was put there to begin with, and I'm not sure I was on the board at the time, and if I was, I don't recollect this specific project, but generally, we ask for those things to be placed there, not because there's a high pedestrian traffic, but because we end up with these large areas of parking. And then so, you know, a pedestrian is left with no choice but to sort of cross through the vehicular right of way diagonally or without direct, without direct line to a walkway. So I understand that there's not a lot of pedestrians, but that would be my concern. Are there any other?
This is a good project. Go ahead with it.
I'm just interested in hearing, Evan, if you have a suggestion for what would increase pedestrian safety? If it would be some kind of an island that runs along the midline of that double parking line, or what other mechanism might increase safety for pedestrians?
Well, ideally, we'd see a walkway similar to what you see on the original site plan. And when you look at that, you might tend to think that that's primarily for the spots that are pulling in, and we can think of that a lot, you know, we go to retail, there's a walkway in front of us, we get out of the car, we walk to the front of the car, or to the rear of the car if we pulled in, and then we walk around the building. But the other point being that, you know, these other poor folks sort of have to find their way around, they can't directly walk to a safe way. Ideally, it would be to ask for a sidewalk along that backside of the building, however, if we do that, we reduce that right of way well below, below 20 feet, and that's, that becomes, that becomes a safety concern with cars passing both directions.
One solution may be to do something simple, like just striping a pedestrian crossing either from the parking area just across the drive where the cars are moving, or even to the Panera, because I could see certainly dropping my car off and going over to Panera for an hour while my car's being worked on.
Yeah, I think...
Being something similar as to what's in front of Kohl's and Petco and they have...
Yeah, just so that motorists are alerted to caution.
Yeah, I think Panera would be a good one. I'd like to see one at that stop line to the northeast corner of the building as well. So in this picture that you guys are looking, there's the entrance way in, and then there's an island on the right, and then the building. So essentially, from that island where, I guess here it looks like maybe, yeah, from that island south, correct, right across that stop line right there, and I think that maybe a painted cross would be, crosswalk would be sufficient, but, and that would help people in those spaces recognize, you can see those as a pedestrian, you're looking for someplace to go. It'll alert you that you really need to be getting out of the way and not be walking across the parking lot and going to a place where cars are going to see you.
I wouldn't want to see a concrete island of any type up in that area, because snowplowing for one thing, you know, removal of the snow, and the other thing is, these guys get 55-foot tractor trailers coming through there.
Yeah, we've got one right there, right?
Yeah, and they need to make the turn, you know, coming up in through there, so that would tighten that up, so. You know, put some striping down, I could go for that.
Yeah, specifically, that's where I would like, if people think it'd be a good idea for it to extend over to the, towards, another one towards Panera, I'd be minimal of that too, but I'm thinking in terms of just this specific, like what, what I'm seeing as being lost here, how could that be recouped? I think that's a reasonable, that singular stripe. How do people feel about that?
Just based on my anecdotal perception of having spent some time over there, I think there's a lot more traffic in between the Town Fair Building and the Panera Building, actually. So one of the reasons why I think the project got designed the way it is and they let go of the sidewalk is there really isn't a ton of foot traffic there. I like the idea of adding some crosswalks and just some safety features to help pedestrians navigate, and I think it would make sense to both go to that double row of parking up there above the building as well as Panera.
Yeah, I think we could do that. Those two curbs are on, I mean, they're on the same site, so.
And with the addition of the crosswalks, I would be in favor of this project.
Okay, well, it sounds like there needs to be a motion made.
Make a motion that we accept the plan as written, with the minor exception of having pedestrian striping put between the parking, northern parking lot and the building itself.
Friendly amendment as well, to include a copy of the approved minor DEP application amendment.
The additional condition that was in the staff.
Oh, okay. Agreed.
Okay, so a motion has been made.
Second.
With an amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All right, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on agenda, on the agenda is a public hearing. We'll conduct this public hearing the same, using the same format that we used for the last. This public hearing is for a proposed 12-unit apartment building amending a previously approved 24-unit condominium project from 1988 at 204 Broad Street, parcel ID number 290-011, in the multifamily urban zoning district. And I was asked by the city planner to make a note that that is identified correctly in the agenda, however, in a mailing that was sent out to abutters, the zone was incorrectly designated as general business, so that those abutters that chose to come speak tonight are aware that your notice in the mail noted that this was general business. It is in fact, actually, multi-urban, multi-urban zone.
So this proposal is for an amendment to a plan that was approved in 1989. The original plan included 24 single-family townhomes, and only six of them were constructed at the time, which are on this parcel here. Hate how it puts that thing right in the middle of the... So the new proposal that you have before you is for one 12-unit building, creating a total of 18 units between the two. The original 1989 approval was a planned unit development, and in 2010, the applicant withdrew the parcel of land that's currently proposed for development, which is this one, from the PUD. So this kind of created a question among staff as to whether or not to look at these proposed 12 units as an amendment to the original PUD, or a subdivision amendment, and which ordinance standards would apply for review. And we determined that the cleanest way for us to look at it is to review the new units as a subdivision. So this means that the 2019 plan that you have before you, if approved, would essentially supersede the original 1989 plan for that parcel. So the original 24-unit approval from 1989 would no longer exist. So basically, any changes that they decide to make down the road would have to be an amendment to this 2019 plan that's before you now. So in your memo, there are a few things that we pointed out. One was to recommend some clarity around how the existing owner occupied units under an HOA will coordinate with the proposed rental units in terms of shared facilities and maintenance. And it sounds like the property owner is already coordinating with the existing HOA on shared utilities and maintenance. Just to make that more clear, we recommend that the maintenance agreement or easement language be finalized and submitted to city staff before the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the project. There was one concern that was brought up by the engineering department in terms of the stormwater detention basin. They're proposing to use the existing detention basin for the new units, and it was originally designed and constructed for the 24 units, so it has the capacity, but where it's over 30 years old, they just recommend that it be dredged. And another item that we discussed was to ensure that there's a buffer that's maintained between the abutting Dillingham property, which I think is in this back corner, one of these ones over here, if I can find it. I'll point it out to you once I figure out which one it is. But it sounds like they are hopefully working with the abutter to make sure that there's a buffer in place that's agreed upon between the two property owners, and we recommend that there be a condition that that is sorted out before a certificate of occupancy is granted. So your memo provides a breakdown of our staff recommendations and some potential motions, and we also have...
I'll just move it.
Okay, good. Yeah, we also have a revised information document with some updated motions and recommended conditions, and so we just recommend that you discuss these items with the applicant and make a ruling on the proposal.
I guess I have questions, and they might be questions that are better proposed to the applicant or their agent. I'm sort of concerned as to why this came before us with so many loose ends that we're sort of expected to say, well, as long as they're taken care of after the fact, specifically things like buffers. Those generally are well noted on site plans that we get, and those are things that we generally discuss. If you remember, we had a fairly lengthy discussion with regard to buffers when we discussed the Subaru dealership at the former Best Buy. So that's, that's something that, if staff feels they can answer that, I'll defer and wait for the applicant or their agent to speak to that. In addition, I guess I would have a similar question if the site, if the staff has any inclination as to why this was the case. If not, I'll wait and ask the applicant why there isn't a shared use facilities plan in place, and what the open space would look like on the property. And if that's something staff doesn't feel they can answer, again, I'll wait for the applicant to answer why that wasn't included in the plan.
From what we can gather, and certainly the applicant's representative, Mike Gatto, can probably answer some of these questions from the history that he has with it, but as a PUD, the infrastructure and facilities were put in place, the access road, the detention pond, for moving forward with the 24 townhome units. At that time, there were, there were three phases, and the plan sets that were included with the applicant's submission shows that history of the de-evolution from the original three-phase project to the withdrawal of land to the existing configuration. So this is a larger single parcel that they are now looking to build in a different way, given different market conditions, and in this case, they are going to use the shared facilities that were already created as part of that original PUD project for the 12 units. So it's, it's not one of those cut and dried things, but we're trying to keep it as simple as possible.
Are there any other questions for the staff? At this time, I'll ask Mr. Gatto to come forward, as well as the applicant.
I'm trying to do my best. My name is Mike Gatto. I'm here with Jerry Morin, who is the developer of this project. This project did come upon us kind of quickly because Jerry was able to secure a purchase-sale agreement. We were able to get some information to staff, and we were encouraged to come forward, so that's why we're here tonight. We agree that there is some outstanding issues with buffering, and we found out through staff report Friday that those issues existed, and Jerry's met with one of the abutters, and I overheard two of the abutters in the audience talking about it, and I talked with them briefly, so I'll let them mention their concerns about buffering as well. We have met with the Dillingham folks in, up at the top or the bottom of the sheet, and have agreed with them to build a buffer, once they see the clearing that's necessary of the project, that we'd work with them to build a fence or a tree buffer along their property. And we probably are very willing, and I'm sure we are, Jerry's willing to work with the other two abutters and do the same. the other two abutters and do the same. Again, we had a shot purchase-sale agreement here, and we were trying to get a sense of whether this project can actually work, so that's why we're here, quicker than normal. And also, initially, in the staff report, there was a little confusion, and probably in my cover letter, I didn't cover it well. The condominium that's out there, the six units that are out there in 2009 and 2010 were amended, and it was determined at that time that likely the condominium project would not continue. So, this project, this property of 2.2 acres, where we're proposing to develop now, is a standalone property, but it needs to share the access drive, based on the easements that are on the, on the plan here, the access drive easements, it needs to share the utilities, and it needs to share the detention pond system with the condominium association. We, again, just got this under option, so we started working with, or trying to reach the president of the association, and he was not quickly available because he was trying to sell his unit, and didn't want to talk about anything, I guess. So, we didn't get the chance to talk to the president of the association until this morning. And Jerry and his attorney, Kim Visperas, had a very good conversation, and we are fairly confident that we're going to be able to work out a mutual easement agreement to share utilities, driveway, and stormwater systems. The condo unit has its own green space, and has its own, meets its own density, so it's a standalone parcel. So, there will be no shared recreational activity or anything on our property, it would be their property and our property. So, again, we're working on it, and I understand the issues with the board, but working on it, and we've had good conversations, and I have no reason to believe that we won't reach agreement with all the folks. We have put this one building to the rear of the site, specifically because we did a little bit of test pit information, and we found that there was ledge in between the condo unit and that building, and if we want to do something in that area where condo buildings previously were approved, they're going to be, need to be a different tile-style building. So, this is what we're considering as our first phase. If we can get this, this project approved, it makes sense to go ahead and purchase this property, and we'll do this phase, and we'll come back at some point and modify the subdivision to do more apartments, and what shape those might be, we don't know.
By purchase the property, you mean you're not the current owners?
No, we have a purchase-sale agreement, which we provided for right title and interest.
Yeah.
So, I represent the current owners as well, okay? So, you know, I did, I did the approvals for the changes in this stuff as well, back in 2009, 2010. So, again, the people are looking to sell the property, and Jerry's the one that's looking to buy it. So, it's going to be two separate projects.
What was the decision to put the, to cause the current egress to go? I understand that there's a bottleneck, but it seems that the majority of it, the majority of it is on what would be a new parcel, so the condominium would require an easement.
The condominium, the crosshatch lines that you see on that plan that come up along the access drive and go across to the front of the condominium is an easement that's already a record, if you want to go back to one of the 2009 or 2010 plans? I think the 2010 much, 2010 if you have it. That's the original layout.
Yeah, and I don't know.
So, you don't have the older plan?
I don't think the older one's on here.
Is the current HOA responsible for maintenance of that?
The current condominium is responsible for the maintenance of the driveway as it exists, the stormwater pond, and the utilities coming into their condominium, okay? When we become purchasers property, we're going to share those expenses on the driveway, we're going to share the expenses on the stormwater pond, and we're going to share the expenses on maintenance of utility systems. So, it'll be some sort of a division, 50/50, whatever it will be negotiated.
I hope for their sake it's not 50/50.
And again, it will be, it will be, it will be a negotiated thing. Right now, they're responsible for all of it, okay?
And have you had a chance to speak to them about removal of waste? So, in the original site plan, trash is to be picked up at the road. Having previously lived in that neighborhood, I know that they bring their trash cans down to the road. Being an apartment, you guys are required to have a dumpster, which is at the very rear of the, rear of the property. So, this is going to require...
We're going to have a dumpster.
...management to be driving a truck up through here periodically and...
Correct. We're going to have a dumpster and have waste, and there's a dumpster there today. Whether or not they're bringing their trash down there, I'm not aware, because I don't live on the site, but...
There is a dumpster on site.
There's a dumpster on site. Today.
Yeah.
So, I don't know who's, who's paying for that, and I don't know where it comes from, but it's, it's part of the association of the condominium.
Actually, you can see it right there.
You can see the little box that's outside on our land. Right there. So, if they're bringing trash down, they're bringing trash down, and if it's getting picked up, I would have expected the condominium association to need to have a dumpster.
I ask because that's what, that's a, that's a condition on the original site plan.
And again, how the condominium is operating, I have no control on, okay? We have no rights in their property. We, we have discussed with them today, working out mutual access and utility and maintenance requirements on the road and the pond.
I, I understand that you guys plan on working these things out, but I, I am worried that what I'm looking at is an incomplete set of information, and a project that will have a major impact on the owners of these condos. This is not a small, this is a much larger impact than if additional condos were built, because if additional condos were built, you would have additional homeowners paying into the HOA fees, they'd be bound to the HOA bylaws, you'd essentially have growth of an existing community in that space. My concern is that I have, I have, and granted, I have only been on the board for some odd eight and a half, nine years, but I have never seen a project that proposes to put a use like this, I guess, that proposes something like this. And so, I have, I have concerns because I have no historical sort of...
It'll be setting a precedent.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we recently did Colonial Ridge, and we converted that from a PUD to house lots, and it was a very similar situation where the condominium...
That went down, that went down in density. It went from condos to single-family homes. That's a very different sort of, and there's, and there's an access road out the back. This is sort of, there is a throughway there. It's, you can drive in one side of that, that project and drive out the other.
There's only one access road off from, off from the east side of Scrabble.
There's only one paved access road, but there is access, so. I guess that, I, some of these things just concern, I would be less concerned if in front of us, I knew that these things were already discussed, that these things were taken care of with the condo association, that these things were already ironed out.
And again, if we could have talked to the president back a month or four, three weeks ago when we started this process, we would have had it worked out, but he didn't call us back. And, you know, you repeated calls, and there's no return call. So, there's one person to contact, and we couldn't get there. Now, we're not going to close on this property unless this is worked out. So, again, I understand your concerns, but I, so far, everything has gone very well with discussions, and I'm pretty certain that it can all be worked out. So, I guess it's up to the board how you want to react, how you want to go.
And I apologize, are there other questions that...
I don't have any other questions, but I share similar concerns that it's, I have full faith that you'll be able to work out the relationships and the barriers and, you know, respond to the needs of abutters and neighbors, but it would be nice to be able to see those in order to make a recommendation or a vote on the site plan.
Yeah. All I can report is it was a really positive discussion this morning with the president of the association, and he's excited about the idea that somebody's going to help him pay something towards the maintenance.
He's selling his condo, you just said that.
Yeah, he sold his condo, the new president now.
No, no, the new, the new president.
Yeah, the new president.
I'm talking about the new president. Sorry.
So, you mentioned earlier that you feel like this might be phase one. How many more units do you plan on adding to the site eventually?
I mean, right now, we're not quite sure, depending how this project goes.
Sure.
But, I guess, best case, it'd probably be maybe another, another 12.
Okay.
Not likely in a building like this, because of the ledge. So, it might be two 16-unit buildings that match similar to the one that's there.
Probably resemble something that's there.
Okay.
This, there is a significant grade change from the property at the bottom, where the building is, to the other side, about 26 feet vertical elevation. So, there is a lot of grading that's going on to make this work, and that's the only place this building, that he wanted to build, would fit on this property. So, we found ledge in between the two buildings, so we can put different types of buildings in those areas. And again, we'd have to come back to you folks with an amendment to do that. Unlike the PUD, a lot of the changes from the 18, 24 units that were proposed to the six that are there today, all those were made at staff level, under the PUD requirements.
If there are no more questions of the applicant, thank you very much, we appreciate your, your input. At this point, I'd be looking for a motion from the board to open the public input section of the hearing. So moved. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
You know, I saw Mrs. Boss's hand up. The motion's been made, there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The public input section of the hearing is now open. Again, as you come forward, please speak clearly into the mic, because the meetings are recorded, and begin by stating your name and address. Thank you. Please come forward.
My name is Claire Robichaud, I'm at 5 Sherwood Drive, and I've been there 48 years, and my land abuts his land. We moved there because it was safe and quiet neighborhood with a lot of privacy. What concerns me the most is the noise and trespassing. So, I'm asking, will you have rules in your complex about noise factor? Will you have a fence and a tree border? Also, the river is nearby, and we've had animals come up from different areas, so you'll need to have like sealed trash bins or whatever away from our property, because we don't want to... And lastly, I'm concerned about the devaluation of our property, because that is very, very close to my land. I think the shape of it, I'm not the one that's building this, but I think the square shape could be changed to a more elongated shape below the ledge.
Yeah.
So, this is what I have to say, I want my privacy, and I don't want trespassing.
Okay, and I apologize, are you looking for responses generally, so that everyone understands, is generally our policy not to respond or make comment during the open
You know what, I'm hard to hearing, and it's echo.
Okay, it's, it's our policy normally to not make comments to the public, so I know you were looking for a, it looked like you were looking for us to acknowledge that we heard you, we did hear you, and I want everyone in the audience to know that as well. We will not be asking you questions probably, we will probably not be making comments. This, this section is for us to really hear, hear your thoughts.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Evening. My name is Richard Valkwood, I live at 29 Marion Drive, I'm one of the abutters. I was going to start by going back in history, three decades. I was going to go back and tell you folks how this all came about, but I think you've got a pretty good idea of how it all happened. I think the owner of the condos in the Wellington, I think he was able to put together a good plan for his 24, his four, six-building condos, and I think those worked out pretty well. There was a big concern by a lot of the neighbors along Broad Street, Marion Drive, I think that was the primary, people who were concerned about drainage, water, a lot of water. There's a hill there, and it, the water comes right out of the ground. So, in, in, in the last 30 years that it's been there, not much has improved. There was that, and your map...
Which map do you want to look at?
You don't need to, you don't need to do that. The detention pond. It was designed, built, and I think Paul, I think the owner of the condo unit came to me, and he told me what he was planning to do, and I thought, boy, that's not a bad deal, I think everybody's going to be happy. So, in 30 years' time, since it went in, I don't know if it works. And how, or what standing would I have to insist that it does work? I don't, I don't have any standing. So, I went to look at this detention pond. It's not there anymore. It's, there's trees in it, there's shrub growing, I'm not sure where the exit water, exit goes out, but from the maps I've been able to get, I think there's two storm drains in the existing driveway or parking area of the condos, and those go to, I think, go to the detention pond, but I also, it appears as though it may go direct to the Broad Street storm drain, and I think that may be how it's working today. Once again, I don't know. I believe, but in 30 years' time, I think a lot could have taken place. We've had some people who've had the storm drain, not the storm drain, but their sewer lines have all been festered by roots, and they've all had, so they've had to fix them. So, let's hope that that still works real good. And if it does, really, that's my true concern, is what are they going to do with all this? There's no plan about this 25 park, 25-space parking lot. Is there going to be storm drains in that lot that's going to drain into that detention pool? There's no, I don't see any plan. Mr. Gatto does a good job in saying, well, we don't need to do anything, in his letters, cover letter, page two, top paragraph, last sentence, last two sentences says it, he's not, they have no plan to do anything. Oh, my gosh, I think the planning board, if you do anything, if you could, if you have any authority, is there some way that you can get someone to fix this pool? I heard the word, and I love that word, dredge it, test it, see if it's working good, and then put a requirement that it be tested every five years at owner's expense. We don't know who that's going to be. That could be anybody today. It may not be Mr., it may not be him, he may decide to back out of this whole thing. But then what really threw me a real curve here this evening, is when I heard it may be another building going in, and that's what I think, oh, I really, I puckered right up on that one. So, I'm going to ask that you folks certainly look at what you see, and I hope I've given you some ammunition to at least make this a little more fair to the surrounding area and to other people. and to other people. I think I've said all I'm going to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the board on this Seeing none, I'll seek a motion from the board to close the public input section of this hearing.
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been made. All those in favor? Motion carries. I think Mr. Valkord raises an excellent concern, and is clearly a concern that the staff had because he mentioned dredging the retaining pond. Have the standards for detention ponds changed since 1988? Because this ostensibly met the standards at the time, but we're talking about new construction, not construction in accordance with the 1988 plan.
That's correct. I'm not the resident expert on the stormwater detention ponds, but my understanding is that back in the day, we didn't have the same standards that we do now for the project. Although this was sized for 24 units, we've gotten a lot more sophisticated in water management with the National Pollutant Discharge System and other standards with grading and drainage. So obviously, in the last 30 years, things have changed and standards have changed for these kinds of systems.
So it's possible, not necessarily true, but it's possible that if we were approving this detention pond as a new detention pond, the standards to which it would be built might be different.
Correct. And I'm not, I am not the resident expert. We do have someone on staff who, due to some of the timing issues, he had a new baby, and he was out, and this was received the end of July, and we're just, you know, into August here. He hasn't had a chance to really give us a thorough evaluation of the scheme.
Do you know if there is a requirement for having it be tested every five years as suggested, or?
Yeah, a lot of that has to do with the potential sedimentation that could occur based on the...
Runoff.
Yeah, based on the detention basin's design and runoff from other properties. It looks like there may be some elevation issues. So there's a water analysis of how water moves through there. It sounds like, I don't know what that would look like, but it's certainly something that the drainage plan would address.
Mr. Gatto?
Would the board, does the board want to hear from?
I have a few more questions as well of the applicant.
I'll just try to add a little bit to the stormwater issue. I think it was wise for the staff to say that the pond should be rebuilt based on what I'm hearing today, and we've agreed...
I didn't even say dredge, though. I'm not sure that's...
Well, it's going to be redredged and made back to the correct, meet the design requirements that were at the time.
1988?
Back in 89, is what we've been asked to do so far. Okay? Under the new standards, we've gone from detention to more stormwater quality, and smaller projects get relief from stormwater because we've learned that you keep damming these things up, it takes longer for it to get to the river. So we're more quality-based today with filter benches and filter beds and stuff like that in your stormwater systems. This was just a detention. It was a straight 210, 25-year stormwater detention. I believe, and I'm not an expert, but I do a lot of this work, I believe that this project is less than three acres in size, so it would be looking more at the same detention that was designed back in 89. I'm pretty certain that if I went to an engineer, we'd be looking at the same detention. But without doubt, based on what I've heard recently since I submitted the letter, the pond hasn't been maintained at all. So it needs to be maintained, and it needs to go back into place. Under the new stormwater rules, you do a new stormwater system today, every five years you have to license that system again with DEP, okay? Or with the town, depending on who's doing the jurisdiction. So just background for the board, that the rules are different. They're quality-based, as more than they are detention. When you get into three acres, you're looking at quality and detention. A lot of quality stuff, but they're more into best management practices and some other things, you know, buffers and things like that if they can do them.
You did work on the Grace Lawn property, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
What size was that property?
That property was about three acres.
So roughly similar in size. I think this one is like 2.58 or something like that. If I remember correctly, though, that property has a, had a detention pond. I remember it was part of our discussion with regard to open space.
It has a filter bed. Okay, so that was 48 units on three something acres. Okay, I think it was, might be 3.5. Okay? But that was a filter bed put in for stormwater quality, okay? Because they look more at the quality issue on these smaller projects than they do the detention. When you do a quality, a filter bed, you also get some detention of some of the storm events on the top of the bed. So yes, as a brand-new project, it required a detention system. We could have put a wet pond in, but like this has a wet pond that backs up during a storm event and then dries out. Okay? We could have done the same thing for detention over there, but we had to deal with quality. So we put a filter bed, so it backs up on top of the bed for 24 hours, and it seeps down through the bed and goes out into the stormwater system. Okay? I hope that the folks saw an improvement in their stormwater on this site because we collected the water, hopefully, in the stormwater pond, and it's going directly into the stormwater system as to rolling down the hill like it used to. There's a, the gentleman described the system feeling, wow, there's an inlet pipe into it and an outlet pipe that goes directly into the stormwater system on Broad Street.
Well, I can speak specific to that particular property. Water is always an issue. In fact, I happen to be downhill, I happen to own a house that was downhill from this particular property, and I won't regale you with my private woes, but...
Our...
Stormwater is an issue in this neighborhood.
Our schematic designing grading plan that we gave you was the intent to drain to that pond, make sure drainage didn't go off the site, which today it sheets flows off the site except for the developed portion. So even though the pond was built to deal with the whole site, the site wasn't built. So a lot of the water is still going by the neighborhood and not going into the pond. Only the paved areas that were constructed are going into the pond. So that pond is underutilized and undermaintained. Okay? So if we go in and maintain that pond and get all the water to go to it, the neighbors should be even better than what they're experiencing today.
Will that be a joint responsibility between Mr. Moore and the HOA, or?
No, we're going to redo the...
Do everything?
We're, no, you know, again, we recognize what you're mentioning is that is a small group of people. We're going to go in and refix that pond as staff had put in as a condition of approval.
And then, and then you'll also be responsible for the maintenance of it?
We'll be responsible for the maintenance because it'll be on our property, and they will share in those maintenance costs. And whether that's 90-10, 50-50, it'll be something that's equitable for those folks.
Okay.
Okay? So we will be working on those types of details. And again, I apologize that it wasn't done. We just didn't connect.
Sure.
Okay? And the other folks that are concerned about buffering, again, we'll, I gave two people my card, and we'll coordinate with them, and, you know, we'll get them a buffer, and we don't want to cause problems in the neighborhood.
At this point, what's the proposed mix of unit size? Are you looking at one bedrooms?
There's all two-bedroom units.
Okay.
Okay?
Are there thoughts from members of the board?
I do have a question from the, right there. From the back of this building to the Dillingham property, as this print shows, is there any kind of tree border to cut down on light and noise?
There won't be. I don't, the existing trees are not on the Dillingham property, and I assume that they're close enough to the apartment building that they would need to be cut down for its construction. So the board recognizes that, you know, it's called planning, right? So the idea is that we are planning, and when we look at a subdivision, we're looking at a site plan review. And one of the things, it's important that we do is make a finding, and those findings are found in Section 60-1306. And it's such that provisions for vehicular loading and unloading and parking for vehicular and pedestrian circulation on the site and onto adjacent public streets will not create hazards to safety. Location or operation of proposed buildings and structures won't be detrimental or adversely affect the use and values of existing development in the neighborhood or the health or safety of persons residing or working therein. There are provisions for onsite landscaping, and that they're adequate to screen neighboring properties from unsightly features of the development. The site plan does not, that the site plan adequately provides for soil and drainage problems which the development may give rise to in accordance with ordinances. And I guess I am left with the distinct feeling that I don't have enough information in front of me to make the determination that that is the case. I know that I'm being asked to put my faith in the parties involved, that they will hash it out at a later time. My personal opinion is such that we're asked to make these decisions for a very important reason, it being that those decisions need to lie on someone, and someone needs to be accountable for those decisions. In this case, it's us, and I will put it up to the board. I don't personally feel comfortable making those determinations tonight with the information that we have. My preference would be that we review this again at a future date when those things can be addressed.
I'll also add to that, that in the past, for board members that weren't present, some years ago, we had a handful of not necessarily complete site plans come before us, and we asked applicants to submit them again, and they did so over the course of the next few months, and they were subsequently approved.
It's really, it's not a negative thing. It's really in everyone's best interest. You know, it's us saying that we don't have the information we need to make the kind of decision we're being asked to make, so. And so, but this is a decision that we have to make collectively. So I'm going to step back from the mic and ask members if they do feel comfortable moving forward, because I don't want to hold up the ship if I'm by myself here, but...
Part of me definitely sees the need to add additional housing in the area, especially and create more density within town. I think this plan, the general spirit of it, supports that. I don't necessarily have a problem with it in theory, but again, I do, I guess I want to see more details included in the plan, especially those that are raised by abutters and neighbors. I'd like to see some sort of more formalized arrangement between, and I understand that currently you don't own the site, but I'd like to see a more formal agreement between the existing HOA as well about shared responsibilities on the site.
It's not unheard of, actually, for things that might be contentious. We've seen before actual agreements. We've, the entire bylaws we've had in front of us before, before we make a decision, so.
I'd like to see this continued next month.
How are you feeling, Ms. Boss?
Yeah, I reiterate Mr. Scoggin's points. I already spoke before that we, you know, I fully support the project appears, and I have faith that you'll be able to make those relationships and finalize the program or the project, but right now, we're looking at a draft project.
End of the row.
I agree.
I'm in complete agreement with it. The project overall looks good, but we've got too many questions at this point to be able to answer our questions that we need done.
Okay. In that case, it looks like it would be appropriate for the board to table this, and that would require a motion on the part of the board.
I move that we table this until said time that the applicant can come back with additional information for us.
I second that motion.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
It would be appropriate to be specific about information you're seeking so that the applicant can make sure that they bring you what you're looking for in terms of answers to questions.
Is there someone that was following up that feels comfortable sticking that list?
I can think of three things, a formal agreement between the HOA.
Yeah.
An updated plan for the detention pond that meets current regulations and also screen between at least the Dillingham property, if not all other pertinent abutters.
I agree. I think that's...
I think that that sounds fair, though it seemed to be what we were discussing. Is that enough information for the...
I was going to say, we're happy to have the table.
Great. Okay.
Thank you for reminding that, reminding us of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This would be a continued item, so this, at this juncture, unless the planning board decides on a special meeting, which would be typically in two weeks, the next planning board meeting would be September 10th. So as a continued item, this item will be on that agenda again.
And...
On the map?
Yes.
Yes. And so that you understand, we may or may not take it up at that meeting. If we have not received from the applicant the information that we've asked for, it will continue to be tabled until we receive that.
And so it's...
Am I following the plan? They would give a telling.
Yes. And furthermore, because it's tabled, the public hearing is technically still open. So any formal comments or suggestions or issues that you want to bring forward to communicate to the planning board or staff, those get forwarded to the planning board because the public hearing is technically still open on this project until it's decided at the next meeting.
Are there any other questions from the audience before we move on to the next item?
For the next one?
During the last item? The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Again, we will proceed with this public hearing the same way that we did with the two previous public hearings. This public hearing is regarding a proposed construction of an 8,700-square-foot storage unit addition to existing 3,200-square-foot storage facility at 671 Washington Street North.
Okay, sorry.
Parcel ID 189-011 in the general business zoning district.
Thank you. The application, as you stated, is for the increase of an existing 3,200-square-feet 16-unit storage facility. This project came in as an administrative approval. It is, because it was under 5,000 square feet in the general business zoning district, it was in allowed use. Technically, we don't have a storage unit definition, but it falls under the description of general warehouse. So you'll notice on this aerial, which I believe is from 2016, the storage units were not present. This application came in, this project came in in 2017. The applicant had huge success renting the 16 units, and so was going forward with an application to extend the project for a total of 56 units at this time. That would be on one parcel. The existing conditions on the ground are residence to the front, which is a rental property that the applicants own, and their business office and home is adjacent in the adjacent parcel. So the project before you is in allowed use under the special exception due to the size of the project. It is exceeding that threshold and is being reviewed under the special exception.
Is it a special exception?
I'm sorry, site plan and special exception. So the main items that staff has discussed with the applicant on site have primarily to do with access and access management issues. Our current access management standards require 230 feet on a highway that goes 45 miles an hour, and also requires a site distance of 450 feet for safety. The applicant currently has... The applicant currently has three drives within a hundred-and-seventy feet. One is sixty-five feet and the other is ninety feet from each other on the parcel. So before you is the request by the applicant to waive that access management requirement. The sections of the code that we're specifically looking at, you did receive an attachment to your staff report covering the entirety of the access management code, section sixty dash seven-nine-nine, sixty dash eight-oh-four, and sixty dash eight-oh-two. So they're looking at safe site distance and looking at additional policies and ordinances regarding shared driveways, which means that that's, whenever possible, shared driveway should occur. And additionally, when you have a mixture of uses in a common development scheme, no single driveway can go to a single use. So currently, the site plan before you proposes a driveway from a former demolished home to extend from one lot to the rear of the other lot to serve the additional storage units. And we've discussed options with the applicant to modify. And before you is the question of how you would like to proceed with their requested waiver.
So, my question being, I'm trying to find it real quick. It's my understanding that when we grant these waivers, it is based upon the finding that the site essentially did not allow for what is currently required under ordinance.
Right.
There's some sort of hardship.
Yeah. And, go ahead. Sorry.
No, that's good.
Yeah, you're, you're correct. It has to do with hardship. It has to do with lot configuration and sizing.
So we would have to make the finding that there is, that it is impossible for them to conform to the ordinance, and that is why we're granting the waiver. And are you asking us to discuss the waiver first?
I believe you've, those are the main issues of concern with the project as proposed. There were limited comments from the development review team, mostly having to do with circulation and access for fire and emergency staff. This is an allowed use in the special exception zone. And primarily, the access issues have to do with the mixture of uses and the residential office and warehouse uses as a combined project. And, and so that's really your, the primary area we see as discussion, but I'm sure you have other areas of concern as well.
Before we discuss any further, may I ask an additional question, staff? Did you receive a, a site plan for this application? I ask because I know we were provided with a schematic, which appears to be a CAD drawing, but it does not conform to the requirements of a site plan under a site plan review. So did you receive something that conformed to those requirements?
This is, this is a, an application that came in via a request for building permit that got flagged as needing planning board approval for the proposed project. So this is, within the last couple of weeks, we've been scrambling with the applicant to provide the information. What you have is the current site plan or the schematic that they submitted for their application last, I think it was last week. Or a week ago? Two weeks ago? I don't remember.
Are there, are there other questions?
Do we have, we don't have it.
Yeah. Audrey?
Yes.
Police Department. What about?
Security.
Well, not just security, but accidents with this entry. Because you've got triple the size of this. Have they projected anything?
Access management is, those standards are in place for safety. The applicants themselves have stated that they have run into some, some issues with a kind of a site distance blind spot where, from their home and office, which is the thirty-foot paved entranceway that you see to the north of the site. And so they, they have run into some challenges. The police department typically does look at access management issues and their recommendation, along with staffs, is that these should, driveway should be combined or shared. And either one of the options available to use the existing drives for either the residential rental or the other property. But they have three entrances. If, if they were combined to two, to serve the two different parcels, we would, we found that that would be acceptable. It would only be a modification of potentially fifty feet from the two, from the two thirty.
What about accidents at the entry with Washington?
We didn't get any reports of that, although I, we honestly, we didn't have time to get information from police regarding accidents at that area.
I'd like, I'd like to see that. Because you've got vehicles running fifty-five going up through there.
Yeah, that road is, is kind of designed for seventy miles per hour and.
And do we have information on the number of vehicle trips that would increase by, given this proposed development?
This is a, one of those, one of those developments where the applicant proposes to make access to the storage units. I believe their hours of operation would be, maybe they can answer that, but I, it's not a heavy traffic area. Some people put stuff in there and forget it. We've all seen storage wars. Well, at least I have. But it's probably what we'd consider to be a low, low traffic generator, low to medium, given, you know, no peak hour trips, that kind of thing. It would be off-peak primarily. And fifty-six units may generate some on the weekends or, you know, at the first or the end of the month, but it's not a constant.
So I went and had a look today at the site, and one of the things that concerned me, of course, in this aerial photo that we're looking at, we don't see that third drive that's already been cut there in the middle. But that one, yes, where the cursor's moving, as well as the first one for the rental unit, yes, that one. They are, they're very close together. And the other thing is, this business across the street, the curb cut is just wide open. I mean, that whole lot is pretty much exposed. And so traffic can enter and exit from there in a pretty uncontrolled fashion. And, you know, I guess my question to staff is, what exactly is the clear reason why the access back to the storage units can't be combined with the first rental driveway? Yes, there.
Well, I'll leave that to the applicant. That was one of the suggestions. I believe they wanted to keep the residential rental separate, even though it is on the same lot and to the rear of the property. So.
Okay, fair enough. And then my other question is, is there code around that big wide-open curb cut across the way?
Yeah, this is a historic issue. The access management standards, I'm not sure when they were adopted, but some of these projects have been grandfathered or in use. If they came in for a change, similar to the Coleman Collision Project, that would be the time to make sure projects are in conformance with the, with the code.
When was the first set of buildings built on this project?
My understanding is it was twenty?
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen.
That's when the building permit was issued.
Yes, December of twenty seventeen.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Could you clarify why that building permit was approved in 2017 when these access points weren't in conformance?
Well, that's a, it's a good question. I believe this came in as a building permit. It did not, it had a zoning clearance, but it was essentially for the use. The information in terms of access, I believe, I, I'm not sure how that, the history of how this was approved.
I don't recall this, not that I necessarily would, but I'm not sure I recall this project. Did this require an initial site plan review?
So it came in, again, this, this goes to the zoning code in the general business district. This would be considered a, an allowed use because it falls under the five-thousand-square-foot threshold that currently exists in the code for coming before you for review. Otherwise, it's administratively reviewed by the building official and through zoning clearance that it's an allowed use.
Okay. Are there any other questions? If there are no other questions, I'll ask the applicant or an agent for the applicant to please come forward and add any information or if you feel you can provide some clarification for some of the discussion you've been hearing.
Not really.
Well, I mean, these are existing.
Oh, I apologize. Can you please state your names into the mic? The meetings are recorded and so it's a matter of public record.
Albert LaValle, six-six-one Washington Street.
Christie LaValle. Those are existing driveways. I mean, we didn't ask for additional curb cuts. They were already there. The only thing we did was maintain the driveways because they weren't maintained. We own four lots in a row. The driveway that we're using for the storage unit was a lot that we, that we purchased and tore the building down because of the, it already had a driveway. So obviously, it made it easier to access the storage units, which was our plan, you know, at the time. And the, we don't want to use the existing, you know, residential driveway for obvious reasons of keeping, you know, the people to have their, you know, peace so that they can live, you know, and don't have to worry about, you know, cars coming in and out.
When we originally applied for the building permit, our intent was to use the six-seventy-one driveway as access to the units, but it didn't take very long to figure out that wasn't going to work. So in talking to an excavator that was working for us at the time, and we had that house that we just tore down, he suggested using that as a driveway, which I'm assuming he, I mean, we agreed to and I know he went, went from there.
How far did you extend that in order to reach the, the storage units, the driveway?
The six-seventy-one driveway or the new driveway?
The.
The one from the demolished house.
The one from the demolished house.
I, footage-wise, I'm going to guess, you know, it goes to the back of the lot. I'm guessing that's probably a hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred feet.
Okay, so I guess I'm seeking clarification. So that, there was a driveway there, but it did not, it did not extend all the way back to the, right? Because that, that lot, it looks like it's only about a hundred feet deep.
Correct.
So, yeah, it looks like the storage units are easily two-hundred-and-forty, two-hundred-and-forty-five feet back, so.
Correct.
It was a house, a new.
Yes.
So if I can clarify, that when there's a demolition of a, of a property, of a home, of a use, the follow-through standard is to close the curb cut at that juncture. This is, it's not widely known or potentially followed through on, but that's the ordinance procedure at that, at that juncture because it's no longer in use and you don't want any, any person just driving into a vacant lot.
And a question for the staff. Would the extension of such a road or driveway have required a permit?
I'm sorry?
Would that have required a permit to extend that?
Yeah, essentially, to, because it would be accessing a different use at that point, but, but as the applicant stated, I think at that time, it, it evolved out of, out of our hands and they were doing what they could to access their units. It's, the lot is in the general business zoning district. It has, it does not appear currently on our tax rolls as, currently it appears that there are two lots as far as our tax rolls are concerned, although the deed is, still exists for the existing configuration.
And one additional question. Crushed stone. I seem to remember that materials and substrates like reclaimed asphalt or stone dust occasionally will qualify as a, as an impervious roadway top, right? Like that qualifies as something that's reasonable to use. Does crushed stone fall into that as well?
Typically, that can yield fugitive dust, but it's used quite a bit.
Okay. I guess I'm sort of thinking of, I'm thinking of projects in the past. I'm thinking almost specifically of the Community Little Theater, and they had wanted to use crushed stone and, and we, we actually required that they used a reclaimed asphalt. I'm trying to remember why that was.
Reclaimed.
Yeah, reclaimed. Yeah, I apologize. What did I say? Did I say claimed or something? Somebody's claimed it, right? Okay.
That is one of the, the recommendations, and it was discussed with the applicant on site. I believe their revised site plan that we received Friday morning did show the proposal to include the reclaim as a surface.
Other, other questions for the applicant or?
This might be a question for staff, but I know that screens are required when you have a building and you have a residential abutter. Is it required in this case? Because we have a residential property on the same parcel.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. This is one of those interesting cases where we have a mixed-use development. Essentially, we have residential property, a mini, or storage warehouses, office, and another residential within proximity of each other, only on two lots. So it's a mixed-use development. All uses are currently allowed in that general business district. We don't necessarily have site standards for that, but it is considered a common scheme of development. So we're looking at it as a site plan for this development. And any recommendations regarding the use buffers are, are the purview of, of the board in this case, but we do not have setback standards and those kinds of things from, it's usually from the property line and not from the use that's a shared property.
It sounds as though the board has several questions for the staff. But are there questions for the applicant? Is there anything that you'd like to add?
Only that, you, we, you know, when we had the excavator do that, it was my understanding he did file for a permit with the city. I don't have evidence of that, but that was our understanding.
I understand, we are not all construction experts, right? So it can be difficult sometimes.
Right.
You rely on a professional and you assume that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. So I think we absolutely understand how something like that can happen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask the board to open up the public input section of the hearing if possible at this point. There's been a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? We've now opened the public input section of the hearing. If you'd like to address the board on this topic, please come forward, speak clearly into the mics, beginning with your name and address. Seeing that there is no public input on the topic, I'd ask for a motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second? There's a second here. All those in favor? All those in favor?
The concerns brought up by engineering, I share as well, especially the curb cuts. Looking at the third paragraph from engineering, City Access Management Ordinance requires 230 feet between curb cuts on a 45 mile an hour roadway. As Audrey noted before, most people go significantly faster than 45 miles an hour on Washington. I know that I'm guilty of that. Having three curb cuts in such a small amount of space is very concerning.
I would be inclined to approve this, but I do think that the access should be reconfigured and that that center access point should be removed and closed and that this will be much safer as a result.
I'd agree with that.
I'd agree with him.
I would probably be the unpopular one. I think that the project sounds like a good one. I think the idea of the curb cuts needs to be addressed. More to the point, I would be inclined, I would be more inclined to approve this if I had a site plan to look at. The drawings that have been provided for us don't meet the requirements of a site plan and I feel like I'm going to be a broken record on this one, but there are reasons that we have some of those requirements and it's similar to the last application so that we can look at some of those specific things that are really important for us to make determinations of. I apologize, I know you've already sat down. Who made, who did this drawing? You did? Okay. So...
I too would like to see a full site plan.
That is, that is my, yeah. My two cents is such that this looks like a project that is worthwhile, but that is similar to the last project, we're looking at an incomplete site plan and that's my-
I'm in agreement with that.
Continue to next month.
Well, someone has to make a motion. That's what you want.
Motion that we table this for hopefully next month.
Until such time as a complete site plan is-
Completed site plan has been submitted.
Is there anything specific that you would like the new site plan to address in addition to the information currently provided?
Curb cuts.
Yes, I think curb cuts. Is everyone in agreement with curb cuts being the issue, a major issue?
That, and the other issue that was raised by the Economic and Community Development Department is parking slash loading areas.
Okay, and that concern might be addressed with a formal site plan, yeah.
And one other thing would be an accident record.
Additional information from the city.
Right, I think that's additional information-
Safety for the road.
Yeah, safety.
For the applicant, I think it would be, it'd be a completed site plan and addressing the curb cuts. Do you feel like you understand what we're asking for? Do you have a question or?
I don't understand what the question is.
That's actually an excellent question. A lot of people don't come to the board and I'm going to take, I will take a vote on the motion and then I'll explain that. Okay. Is there a discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Okay, so the topic has been tabled. So, when we think of a site plan, sort of commonly, we think of a drawing of what's there and in most cases, that would suffice. However, when we're looking at site plans for the city of Auburn, there's specific requirements and some of the requirements are that, for instance, topography be shown on the site plan. These are plans that are generally, I don't think I've ever seen a plan that wasn't stamped and signed, that is to say a survey signed off, surveyor signed off that the plan was accurate.
We have, and we have in the past, but we've turned them back for continued.
Yeah, and if you, do you have a, do you have pen and paper? So, you can find information on what is required in sections, beginning at section 60-1300 in the ordinance. And if you go online, they're available, you're going to go under the government tab at their website. You'll look, one of the things that will be there is charter and ordinance. If you choose that menu option, there'll be three things that you can choose from. You want the center one, which is the city ordinances, and then at the top is just sort of like a website. You can type in that number and it'll search that for you so you can read that section of the ordinance to get a better understanding of how the formal site plans for site plan review are a little bit different than what we think of generally as a site plan when we're talking outside of this context.
Staff will assist the applicant in making sure things are-
Thank you very much. All right, and again, I think we all felt that this looks like a worthwhile project. We just need a more completed set of plans in order to be able to make our decisions. So, thank you very much. And before we move on, do you have any, do you have any other questions or? The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Again, we will conduct this public hearing similarly to the previous public hearings. This is a public hearing regarding a proposed conversion of a 12,000 square foot nursing home to 12 residential units at 185 Summer Street, parcel ID 260-217 in the multifamily urban zoning district.
You ready?
Oh, is, I apologize. I think incorrectly, I stated previously that a previous item was sent out with incorrect zone, but I believe the butters received a notice on this one that this was-
General business.
General business, but this is in fact in the multifamily urban.
Yes.
Is that correct? I apologize. Does everyone in the audience understand what I'm saying? The notice that was sent gave you the wrong zone. It is actually in something called a multifamily urban.
So, before I begin, I want to state that we received some revised information since this staff report went out, which I circulated. It says revised information for 185 Summer Street. When we met with the applicant onsite, there were some items that we weren't clear on in terms of the calculations. This is a redevelopment project that essentially is going forward with a demolition of one of the four structures that was there previously. And so, some of the calculations for the removal of impervious surface and the addition of impervious surface had to be recalculated by the applicant onsite and we did receive those numbers. So, the information that was in the staff report has been modified to a certain degree. So, I wanted to just bring that to your attention as we move forward. The property is, and another item that popped up, our tax records indicate that the property is 30,927 square feet, although a current survey by the applicant indicates that it's a little more than that at 31,685. So, I just wanted to make those two clarifications because the calculations and numbers for impervious surface, et cetera, are based on those factors. This is a multifamily urban zoning district, which allows a variety of different types of uses. That's the purpose of the zone, to allow a mixture of different types and densities. And this lot would be offering one single-family unit, a duplex, and the former nursing home would be converted to 12 apartment units. So, there would be a multifamily building, a duplex, and a single-family on the property. For this reason, our calculations are considered, you'll notice on the first page and second of the staff report, the minimum lot area for one family is 5,000, a two-family is 6,500, and then for multifamily, 5,000 square feet. Within this zoning district, the densities can go up to 26 units per acre if the other components are met. At this acreage, the applicant is within that wobble distance to essentially meet those standards of the current zone for density. It would allow, at this point, at 21 units per acre, or roughly 2,061 square feet of land per unit. So, it also requires 50% net green space and other standards, as we've indicated, for parking, et cetera. But because it is a redevelopment project, it is particularly a challenge within our older urbanized areas to meet this 50% green space requirement, particularly when you've got a variety of units present. The applicant is requesting in their site plan that they have a 20% green space requirement for their project in order to provide sufficient parking and additional parking for visitors. There are some other issues with the project in terms of the demolition of the former 4,000 square foot addition to the nursing home. There's still some settling that's going on regarding the removal of that building and the structure, so they have asked that final paving for that be in line with the engineer's recommendation, that settling occur over the next year or two before they finalize the paving. And we've added that as a condition. We have talked about waste disposal with the applicant as well, as the 12 units will need additional disposal. And there was some concern about potential additional landscaped area between the development and the neighboring developments. So, the staff report and the revised recommendations and example motions essentially lay out your options for the project. It is within your purview to grant a variance to the green space requirement and that is section 60-335, number two, and under the subdivision guidelines, because this is a subdivision. It would allow you to grant that variance because the project as presented meets the purposes and intent of the zone. It is adjacent or near to Pettingill Park in its current location. There are some other recreation areas in proximity. I believe the mix of apartment units vary from small studios to three bedrooms. The applicant submitted a mixture list of the proposed units with their project proposal.
Questions for the staff?
I'd like to hear from the applicant, questions for her.
If there are no questions from the staff, I think we'd like to hear from the applicant.
Hi, Ella Valley, 661 Washington Street.
Hello. Is there, would you like to maybe explain the project a little bit? The types of apartments, are they market rate, subsidized?
They'd be market rate apartments.
We're currently, we would be increasing the green space that's there. I mean, I know the staff talked to us about reducing the parking spaces, you know, because currently we have two per unit, which, I mean, when I have a person call and ask me for a rental, they don't ask me how much green space is there. They ask me, is there off-street parking, you know, how many parking spaces? So, that's why we were, you know, more concerned, obviously, about, you know, having two parking spaces per unit, even though that's only required for one and a half. And we are increasing the green space, you know, compared to what's there now.
Do you guys have a general contractor lined up to do this?
We're doing it in-house.
We do it ourselves. We do everything ourselves.
Do you have examples of previous projects around this size that you guys have done?
We haven't done anything this large. We mainly do, we have a three, you know, a three-unit and mainly houses that we do.
So, but you develop them or do you buy existing structures usually?
We buy mainly forecloser houses and remodel and rent them.
Okay.
We have done, you know, an apartment building also.
My concern with the project is less about the green space, more about the level of experience you guys have with doing something like this.
We would hire, you know, what contractors we need.
Yeah, subcontractors, I get that.
Right, we would subcontract, we're electricians, or he is.
Sure.
You know, electrical, we own an electrical company. We are, we, you know, do all the FedEx grounds and maintenance. We maintain all those buildings. We work Procter &amp; Gamble, L.L. Bean, you know, things like that. So, I mean, we have, you know, done significant-sized projects, you know, maybe not in residential as much, but, you know, we would hire plumbers that we would need, things like that.
Sure. This just seems like a significantly larger project.
Right.
I've been in business since 1991 and I've done million-dollar projects. Not residential, but-
Okay.
I mean, he travels all over the country to work for, do work for FedEx and other, you know, vendors. Even out of the country, honestly, he's done, we've worked in China, things like that.
Okay.
Other questions for the applicant?
Yes, you know, again, like the previous, I would like to see a completed site plan. What you have provides a fair, you know, some detail, but I'm left with a fair amount of questions about, about how it's, the layout, what you're going to do for screening, drainage, you know, all the typical things that go into a site plan.
I mean, these are, you know, it's existing floor footprint, we're not changing the footprint, you know, we made it better by removing that huge, you know, used building that's been sitting there since 1991. We removed that building. You know, we have a year timeframe by the bank, so obviously, we're under the gun of getting it done. We requested, you know, we, before we even purchased the property, we went to, you know, the city to find out, you know, basically, you know, to get approval to do this, we didn't realize that we had to go through this-
Would this be an allowed use, yeah.
We didn't realize that we had to go through this project until, this process until two weeks ago, so it kind of was a surprise. Needless to say.
Feeling a little under the gun.
Just slightly. You know, because like I said, we have a, you know, a year timeframe and, you know, when that's up, it's up. You know, we know what it takes to make, to get a project done and, you know, timeframes and timelines and stuff like that, you know, we, you know. We deal with it in other businesses and other types and, you know, we have the storage units and things like that. I mean, we have multiple businesses that we, you know, make it happen, so we know what we have to do and we do it.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Engler, it looks like you have something.
Yes, well, I admire your spirit personally to take this on and try to get it done and increase the rental housing stock that's available in Auburn, so thank you for that. Specifically with the impervious surface issue, I actually went and visited the site today and I saw that there's actually some options to increase the green space without reducing the number of parking spots that you have on your schematic. And I'm referring specifically to, there's the part that goes back, the paved drive that goes back along the wheelchair ramp on the side of the 12 unit. So, one question is, would you consider tearing that up and turning that into a green space or is there a reason not to?
The main reason not to tear that out is a couple of reasons. Number one, that would kind of like be access for us to go in to maintain the building, say the- say, the, the heating system went out, or, you know, we have to bring plumbers in who, you know, have to clean out the cleanouts that our whole house.
Are those little wooden doors back there, is that a bulkhead?
Yes.
That's the basement access.
It is the basement access, so that we can get into the building from there. Also, we've considered putting the trash there, since we were just informed that we need trash, you know, to pay for trash, so, you know, we also have considered putting the dumpster in that area, so that the dump, you know, the trash can get in there easily to remove the trash. Now, if you had to bring a furnace in, obviously, that bulkhead is gonna be the way to do it.
I just had one parking clarification, and our, our numbers, the total number of units by our parking standards would require for all units 23 parking spaces, so the entire site, I believe, shows 31. Just a number clarification.
It's actually the third.
I think it's wise, I think it's wise to provide more than what's necessary, I agree, having two per.
It's actually 30, not 31.
Yeah. I totally get that.
One is for the handicap.
The one in front of the wheelchair ramp is not really a parking spot.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
I do agree with the engineering department's review, that one entrance for the parcel on either road would be standard and preferred. Just the three entrances are a little confusing, and it makes the, since you are proposing to construct a subdevelopment, you would want the subdevelopment to be flow as well as possible with the existing nature of the neighborhood. I think having one entrance would help clean that up a little bit.
Are you talking about the Turner Street entrances?
Yeah, yep.
Because they, they were, we're removing ones, there will be two entrances, and one is really not an entrance, it just goes underneath the house to the garage of that house.
Oh, okay. So, wait, so you're gonna, is this for the single family in the back?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the single family, I mean, that's just goes underneath the house to the garage. It's not really entrance, it's only to that garage. And we would be removing the other entrance. I mean, we did consider widening that entrance, but we thought it would be, you know, better for that house, once again, to use a separate entrance.
Okay.
A little bit away from the house.
Yes, sure. I would reiterate Mr. Engler's comment. I commend you for looking at adding market rate apartment housing. It's something that we're short on, and, and it's something that the board always loves to see. I also commend you for, it sounds like, taking sort of the next step in your, in, in your business with regard to, with housing. It sounds like you're saying you've, you've done a lot of single houses or, or two or three units, and so it's, it's also really great to see a local business owner taking on a larger project, because that's another thing, we, we really love to see those bigger projects in, in local ownership, quite frankly. It's, it's, it's what's best for the community. But I will reiterate what Mr. Skoggin said, it's, it's difficult to sort of think about these things without the, the site plans that, that we generally look at. And I'll say, for example, the, the green space is marked out in very particular ways, and that, if we had a, a, a site plan in front of us that conforms to the standards, we might be able to brainstorm ways to help you sort of, sort of build more green space in. I think we're sort of at a loss to do some of these things.
When you say a site plan, I'm assuming that you're more talking about a picture.
Right, yeah.
Not, not necessarily drawings, more of a picture.
It, it is a drawing. Maybe Audrey can give you an example of a.
Yeah.
Site plan earlier was actually a little incomplete, but that we got on the, on the previous apartments here, but this is, this is still missing some things from the site plan. This is one of two plans that were submitted, and between the two plans had everything that was supposed to be there, except for, what's missing here is, like plantings, like, like where, what's the landscaping plan look like, things like that.
Well, I mean, you could see in our drawings, you know, where are the green spaces? We clarified that, you know, we, like I said, we're not changing the footprint of the building, we're just basically gutting the inside, make, you know.
Yeah.
We're not even moving any load-bearing walls. We specifically, you know, went around those load-bearing walls to, you know, make the project, you know, more cost-efficient. It also gave the tenants better, larger rooms, you know, and we just added the, you know, extended the paved driveway.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. It sounds like you're adding things that, that someone who's looking for market rate apartment is, is gonna be interested in. I, I say it only because it's difficult for us to sort of help you through these, through these waivers, when we don't sort of feel that like we're getting all the information we normally have, so.
Right, and I, I mean, I do understand that, and I can understand it more with the storage units, you know, because like, we're cha, we're moving things, you know, we're, we're adding a building, but we're not, we're adding a building. You know, here, we're, the building footprint is already there, you know, we're just changing the inside of it, you know, we're not, other than extending the driveway.
But what you're actually proposing to do is create a subdivision, which is a, which is a different can of worms. It's not as simple as just gutting a building and.
I know, it sounds complicated, because when we generally think of subdivision, we think of lots of houses on a, on a street. However, taking a building and splitting it up, even if you're splitting it up into rental apartments, constitutes a subdivision, so.
Right. I mean, it, you know, they had, you know, explained to us that these drawings were not, you know, we would have obviously got, in the two weeks, we could have gotten drawings differently.
Sure.
I mean, you know, like I said, we're just, we're under the gun, kind of, you know, because of not just finding this out six months later after we started the process with the city. You know, we started in January with the city.
And I hope you appreciate the perspective of the planning board, which is that we need to protect the public interest and all of the people of the, the neighborhood.
Right, and, and I mean, I do think we're taking the public interest, you know, because, like I said, we're adding the more parking. That's what people want, they request, you know, when I, when I rent apartments, we have 15 houses, and then the apartment building, you know, different cities, different, even different states, but, you know, so we know, you know, what it takes to get it done. And I know the city does need more apartments, because literally, I rent the apartments in hours when I list them, so, you know, and also, it has to do with our standard, you know, we, we have a high standard on the way, the way we keep our apartments.
That's what we like to hear. That's great.
Are, are there other questions from the board for the applicant?
I mean, we, you know, we would also look at, you know, if you guys had requirements that, you know, well, we will approve it based on, you know, these conditions, you know, we would definitely, you know, do what we need to do to make it happen.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd be looking for a motion to open it up to the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We got a motion and a second. All those in favor. Members from the public that would like to address the board on this topic, please come forward. Stick your name and address into the mic as these meetings are recorded.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name's Bill Horton. I live at 401 Turner Street in Auburn. I've been there for almost 20 years, and I know lots of you folks on the board, so I appreciate seeing you here and thank you for your service. I'm here to represent myself, and I have lots of my neighbors behind me, so I'm happy to see them here. My first statement is that there's a lot of work happening on this property already, and so a building's been taken down, demolition inside the building's happening, and the fact that the two people that were here in front of you are naive to how to do this is, is not an issue of this board. The fact that they want to take our little community, which is a blend of single homes and mostly double-family homes, and turn the old nursing home, which had lots of nice older folks sitting in front of it, into apartments, and potentially bring 30 additional cars to our little community, the streets are not that wide, there's already people parking on the streets. Turner Street is a fast street, you want to put another curb cut in Turner Street, and so I'm, I'm not sure any of you would want to live across the street from a parking lot that's been paved. And so I'm not looking forward to this project where they've taken down a house, and they want to put a parking lot across from my house, that I have to look at every day. And while I appreciate the fact that we need apartments, and I appreciate the fact that these guys want to take on a big project, they're already six months down the road into this, so I don't know where they have the permits to be doing what they're doing. And I, I don't think it's for the best interest of this part of the town to bring more cars, narrow streets. There is a use for this building. I'm not sure it's 21 apartments. There's a number to the current pavement that's already there. There's a number, and there's a use for this, this building, but I don't believe it's additional apartments. I don't believe it's a parking lot across from my house. I don't believe it's another curb cut on Turner Street. And so I appreciate you thinking about us who live in the community and have lived there for a while. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the board?
Katie Hunter, 165 Whitney Street. I too have that same concern, men in the area for many, many years. Turner Street is ridiculous already, so adding more traffic, 30 more cars, whether it's Winter Street or Turner Street, Summer Street, all those streets are very narrow, they park on the road. I respect the parking spaces, but I don't, I really not looking forward to that much more traffic in that area. Also, with the units, single-family home, duplex, the, you know, looking, I look at it as education also. What's the impact going to have at our school at Washburn? Can they handle the extra students that that might bring? So that would be another concern I have. And again, kind of carbon copying what he's saying is, I don't want to run down, I'm a big runner, and I don't want to run down Turner Street and see a parking lot. We know that as a nursing home, there were people who worked there and visitors that didn't create a lot of traffic. This is going to create a lot more traffic, and I hope you respect that as you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the board?
Good evening, and thank you for being here. I'm Dr. Kathy Turbine. I live right next door to Bill, 393 Turner Street, and I am gravely concerned over this opportunity to consider an apartment building across the street. I've been in the community 30 years, and that has always been a, especially our side of the street from Turner, is definitely a single-family or duplicate family, and the investments we've made in our properties as well, and the traffic, all the issues. I have nothing really to add to Bill's explanation, except to totally agree with it, and just say that I'm even closer to it. And I just believe that, number one, the community is going to be overwhelmed with this piece of, you know, community project that is going to, is proposed here. Especially the other thing I'm concerned about, too, is the naivete, as Bill said, of the project planners. Yes, you can hire architects, yes, you can hire people to help, but what is that going to look like? And is it really gonna be a good addition to our community in terms of safety and appearance and community use? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on the topic?
Hi, I'm Kim Lindahl.
And I'm Robert Lindahl.
We live at 388 Turner Street, and I was wondering if I could go and point this out on the map?
Yes, please.
Our property actually sits right here. Our property, their building is actually on our property. Now, it's grandfathered, so I'm not upset about that. I'm not upset really at all, I'm just concerned that because this is on our property, all the water from their roof and stuff goes on our property, and it just drains down our driveway. If they're gonna put units in this building, which is, you know, pretty, is it two-story, three-story? Where are they gonna put the fire escapes? Because if you're doing with apartment buildings, we actually have apartments that's rebuilding, we have, we have to have a fire escape. So where are they gonna put the fire escape back here? Because then it would be on our property. We already are already cramped as it is in this bad portion of our property, and they already have a fence over here, and then we have an open space, and then we have this single-family home. But the small section, there's a small section with ours that we can walk in between these two buildings. Our concern is, when they did have a nursing home, the elderly folk, some of them had dementia, so sometimes they would come in our driveway, one got into our truck, thought he was gonna go for a ride. Another one came into our home, walked through the building, walked back out. There, if you're gonna put 12 units in here, you're gonna have people walking through here. We had so many people walk through our driveway, we had to put up signs, we had elderly people fall over in their wheelchairs, or their, we were concerned that we were gonna get sued. So there's people that are gonna be coming through here, and they're gonna cut through. I mean, there's an entrance here, there's an entrance here, and I'm not sure there's an entrance back here. So where are they gonna come through? Are they gonna come through back here, because it's still open? They're gonna be coming through our air, our, our property, and then we're gonna be liable if they should get hurt. That's what our concern is. It's not that, I mean, I really was sad to see all these old folks go. I work with the elderly. I'm concerned if they can get bigger families, more vehicles, really good home. We, the elderly didn't have a bunch of vehicles, and I know there isn't a whole lot of houses there. There's just mostly an entrance where they used to bring all their deliveries in. This is the area that they most likely have a parking. So there's an entrance here, and there's an entrance here, so all these people have to come around, or they have to come around here. Unless they put a, here. So my concern is, okay, you're gonna put apartments up here. This one, I think, is already a second story, I think this is three-story. I've been inside the building. So where's, is it gonna be a fire escape here or a fire escape here? Because we have to have a fire escape. We have a three, we have a three-story. So these are, these are safety concerns when you have, because we, we rent, these are safety concerns. And tenants are tenants. We have people going up, strangers going up our fire escape, we have to tell them, please, don't go up the fire escape, it is not an entrance. And they still go up there, even the tenants, we have to tell them, you can't go up the fire escape, it's not an entrance. So they're gonna have some of these tenants going up these fire escapes. So these, these are our concerns, because we are so close, I mean, we live to the point where they're on our property. We're not abutting, we're actually, they're actually on our property. Now, it's grandfathered, so that's our concern. I think my husband had some other concern.
Well, I, I, I commend these people, just as, as you do, but there is a shortage of housing, and I agree, and it would be nice to see good housing. But I have to agree with some of my neighbors, one of the things that's difficult about where we live is, it's very difficult for me to just back out of my driveway and get out on Turner Street. It's, it's not even funny. I, I have numerously times, I have been actually working on the house in some fashion or form or on the lawn, and I've heard the screeching of tires and actually saw accident after accident with the corner, as you can see down here, Dennison Street. And what happens is the traffic builds up quite a bit there. If you were to drive on the street today, you'll see that they've finally gone to that method of putting up a digital speed limit sign up on Turner Street to try to warn people to, please, slow down, because the problem with that street is that it's on a hill, so when you start heading towards town, you can't slow down, or you're not gonna slow down, because you have to ride your brakes for such a long distance, because it is a hill. So it, it has a natural tendency to make people pick up speed. So, and I, so I kind of feel bad for the policeman trying to get everyone to slow down. The other, the other part that I'm concerned of is that, you know, just like one of the people said here, one of my neighbors said, that there's a better use. You know, there have been, I think it's a total of 11 in the past three or four months of nursing homes that are closed in the state of Maine. The baby boom has begun, and there are more elderly just growing in, in, in large amounts. And... And, and I, you know, I just think that it should have been left with the use that it is at. And I have the same concerns about the fact that they'd be entering and leaving if there was to be an entrance on Turner Street. It is difficult, just as myself as a single resident, or that I have three residents, that they'll even come and go. Never mind the fact that there might be 18 different people. And there's been, you know, over the years, I've seen the acceleration of traffic due to the fact that there is the, you know, the Walmart up the street, the Home Depot, it's a way of avoiding the dangerous center street. And so, it gets an awful lot more traffic on it than it does, than, you know, than I think it should. And, you know, I have, I had two experiences so far, when you talk about the novice-ness of the people that are involved, and it's not trying to be insulting because, I mean, I appreciate people who are ambitious. But I was sitting upstairs in my, in our apartment, and my whole house shook from somebody with a excavator out there tearing down that other house. And it was unbelievable, the shaking, stuff was falling off of my walls, I was like, what in the world? I mean, and I had heard that the sounding, the sound that they were destroying the other building. But when they got down to the foundation, apparently they were having a difficult time at breaking it up or tearing it up. And the, it was just amazing to me, I couldn't believe that this was happening. So my first response was wanting to call the cops. And he said, no, 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 let's, let's just go out there and see if we can reason with these folks. So I ran over there, and the guy was swinging around with his excavator, and I finally got him to recognize me. And I said, listen dude, you can't do this, this is crazy, you've got to be causing some type of damage possibly to my foundation. This is an older house and, and the way that it was being done was very disconcerting to me. I had no idea that, that they were going to be tearing down the house and no recognition of that. And then, you know, there is, the people who had it before, I never, I've never gone over to speak to them yet, but there is a tree on the other side of our house and I have to replace the roof on, we're going to replace it in the spring. And there's a, there's a tree sitting there that's been creating mold because it shadows the backside of the house. And because there are also trees on the, it's hard to explain. On this side, there's a whole bunch of trees, so a good portion of the house gets shattered. And you can see this tree right now, it's like flowering right over the whole back end of my house and it's caused mold and moss to actually grow on the roof. And I don't know what they're going to be doing about that, whether they'll be taking a tree down or not, because that has to stay because you require a certain amount of green space. So, and, you know, so I guess that's all I have comments for. I would really like to see it stay as a different use. Do you have anything to add to that?
I'm all set.
Okay. Thank you very much for your service, folks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on this topic?
My name's Craig Woodard, I live at 393 Turner Street as well. And I just want to address the issue about the green space that you're talking about. The green space, as we all know, is an oxygen exchanger, it's sound deadener, it provides a lot of services to the local area. Additionally, if you, these people are correct that tenants probably don't care about trees and shrubs in their yard, but the locals do. And if you allow them to short their area for green space and you continue to allow that kind of a process, you won't have any green space left in the area. Okay? They should have to live by the same standards as far as green space as the rest of us. Ideally, we should increase this green space, not shrink it in this local area. Like I said, it helps to keep the traffic noise down, it helps to cool the place down a little bit better, it does, it provides a lot of services and shortening the green space. It's just a real problem that I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on this topic? Seeing none, I'll seek a motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second to my left. A motion's been made and there's a second, all those in favor? Before we begin, I do believe Mr. Martelli had a question of a member of the audience, and I asked him to hold that question until after the public input generally because we don't ask questions of the public at that point. But Mr. Martelli did want to seek some clarification from someone.
Steph maybe will answer that. Audrey, is there, being that these people say that the fire escape would be on their property, is there an easement that was written way back so that the new owners of this 12 unit can maintain their building?
Not that I know of. We don't have a building plan set yet that would address that fire escape issue. That's one of the reasons why fire hasn't made, you know, they haven't reviewed a plan set to look at access. Certainly that rear access point would probably be in favor of them. But the building official hasn't, you know, determined the proper egress yet based on the apartment configurations.
I believe the applicant felt that they could...
Can I show you? We do have plans, which you guys have, which has a fire escape, it is not on their property. The fire escape is...
Yeah, but you still have to maintain your building, whether it be painting or whatever else, so...
Right, we're actually going to be putting vinyl siding to eliminate the, having the painting issue. We did, you know, replace the roof part, which we spoke to their tenant.
So you're going to have a scaffold or a man lift or something on their property?
Right, which we would talk to them about, like we did with the roof. The fire escape is on this side, it's not on their property. Anybody would be accessing the building through their property. There is an entrance where the parking lot would be. And I'm sure that they can see just the maintenance and, you know, upkeep that we put into the other two buildings to bring them, you know, back to usable. I mean, water was just pouring in the buildings when we bought them.
So that the people from your building don't walk onto their property, can, can there be a fence put in that driveway?
Of course, definitely. There could be, if you put a fence or...
So if we had a site plan, that's actually one of the findings in, in site plan review is the barrier, yeah, so. So, other discussion?
Yeah, I, you know, like I mentioned before, I need to see a full site plan. Some of the concerns that were brought up that I think it's wise for you to include in it would be additional trip reports. So how much new traffic would it generate? A plan for screening for abutters? And ideally, you'd work with those abutters and have a discussion with the neighborhood. And then, what was the other thing we were just talking about?
Green, green space?
Green space addressed.
Parking area?
Were you thinking specific to the egress?
Yeah, egress. I'm not sure if a stormwater plan is necessary on this. I mean, again, like that would be addressed in the full site plan.
Registered architect can tell you all that.
Yeah.
Some kind of an idea exactly how this is going to progress? We do have wonderful staff. I know that the planning staff will sit down with you and explain everything that needs to be on there and why it needs to be there and what it is that we're going to be looking at. So if you have questions, you know...
We are increasing, we're increasing, as to what's going to be...
And again, we understand that, however, you are creating a subdivision, so you have to...
No, I understand, but I'm just saying we're not increasing, we are increasing.
Other discussion? Well, generally, when we end our discussion, we...
Make a recommendation?
Make some sort of motion. So I will leave it up to members of the board. I think it's evident sort of where everyone was at, but...
Before I make a motion, I just want to reiterate, you know, the city of Auburn and the planning board specifically are in support of more density, creating better housing opportunities for the residents of Auburn and future residents of Auburn. In that mind, I move, I motion that we table this until we have a full site plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, can we add the discussion, is it possible, friendly amendment?
Yes.
For you to include the items that we're lacking?
So additional trip reports, plan for screening for abutters, more detailed plan of what the green space is going to look like and/or landscaping.
Boundary and parking.
Yeah, a more clearly delineated plan for boundary, including fencing if need be, and a clearer picture of parking as well.
All right. So the initial motion was amended, there was a second, do you continue, are you still second? Discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And actually, before we move on, it occurs to me, someone mentioned that the project had already begun. And I would like everyone here to know that this does occasionally happen to the board. If you notice, it was not a discussion we had whether or not it had begun or not. When these things come before us, we always treat them as though nothing has yet happened. That means that we are not compelled to allow something continue if we don't like it or if we put a condition. We treat it as though it hasn't happened. Does that make sense to everybody?
Just to reiterate on that too, I think, Audrey, you might be able to correct me on this, but demolition of a building is a completely separate application.
It is, and that typically does not require notification of neighbors, it's a demolition permit for the project itself.
That being said, you know, in order to be a good neighbor, it would be a wise idea to notify all of the abutters whenever you guys are going to be shifting phases in, you know, if you are demolishing any other buildings, you know, let everybody know beforehand.
It wasn't a necessary permit. We, you know, we hired a contractor.
Sure, sure.
Everything was done by the authority, as far as, I know, I agree with what you're saying about being a good neighbor, you know what I mean?
Yep.
And I think part of the issue, because we did it in the winter, made it worse because, you know, obviously it's harder to break things up in the winter and, you know, and it's, the ground's frozen.
Before we move on, was there a question about...
I just find it amazing that there is no requirement to call people when you have destroyed a building.
That's part of the permit process, and actually, that's, that's...
Is that ever changing? Because I think that kind of...
I know that sort of, I guess we could comment on things like that, but that's out of our purview, that's generally a staff, something that staff handles that doesn't come before us, so...
You're demolishing a building and you have to get, depending upon what you're actually doing, you're just filling in the foundation with sand or dirt or something, that's one thing. If you're going to excavate an actual foundation, and you're talking about putting something like, the difference between, you know, getting, filling and roofing.
It's a valid concern and I would leave it at, I would encourage you to speak to your city councilor and see if they're, they're of the same mind and that they'd like to...
I just think it's respectful to take any...
Yes, question?
With all the proper paperwork, it's constantly been called for, building, letters and stuff, you know, the...
Would you like to answer that one?
So it is a continued item. If the planning board has deferred this to the September 10th meeting, this again is an open public hearing. At this juncture, you are welcome to send comments to the planning board via the planning staff, us. Formal letters or other suggestions or comments are welcome during the public hearing process. I don't believe we have a clause that requires us to notify you again once the public hearing has commenced. It's a continuation item to the next formal meeting, which is September 10th. But please do check our website for the agenda and the notice usually appears in the paper, that the notice will be, will appear in the paper for the continued items for the public hearing.
We do read them and we do appreciate you guys writing them too.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay.
All right, thank you very much. So the next item on our agenda is miscellaneous. I will begin with A. We had three members, one who cannot be present tonight, I think as well as Audrey who attended, is that, were you able to attend, Audrey?
Yes.
Okay. The MMA presentation in Bethel. And those members that went graciously agreed to briefly discuss with us some of their sort of ah-hahs or things that they felt were really important or new learnings that were important for the rest of us to hear who were unable to attend. So the two members present that were able to attend were Mr. Martelli and Mrs. Boss, so I will let you guys give us the deets.
Do you have anything you want to say?
Go for it.
All right. And I did not have an opportunity to connect with Matt, so I don't know if he has anything that he wants to share too. And Audrey, please chime in. But I think that overall, it was a really valuable training. It was well-attended by both planning board members and board of appeals members from across the state, and I think that the MMA did a pretty good job with it. The three major topics that were covered were the Freedom of Access Act, which is also known as the main right-to-know law, the decision-making process or the preparing of findings and conclusions, and also how to deal with variances. And it was an interesting training because there were a couple of things that were pretty contentious among a lot of the different members of planning boards who were there. And so those are the things that I wanted to kind of surface because I thought they were interesting. So the first one that was related to the Freedom of Access Act was about site visits. And so in the time that I've been on the planning board, we've not done any site visits as a board. But this was really contentious during the conversation. And so, site visits constitute a public proceeding and site visits should be used, this is from the MMA, site visits should be used for information gathering only and not for decision-making or for deliberation on application. So the MMA's position is that it's not appropriate for some members of the planning board to conduct a formal site visit and then report back to the full board since all members must have access to the same information to make their decision. They did say that it is appropriate for a code enforcement officer to conduct a site visit and bring that back to the full planning board, but not to just an individual member to share back because it's all about due process and having consistent information.
And I just, I want to clarify a couple of things with that. And we encourage you to drive by the property, to inspect the property, to look at the property, to research it, to do your own due diligence. It's if you, the formal site visit where you're actually meeting with the applicant on-site and getting further information, or conferring and making decisions or judgments with other planning board members outside of the group. So you can, you can visit and just, you know, talk about the weather and isn't that interesting? But you need to keep any decisions or problem statements, you know, to yourself, or at least share those if you, if you do come to some decisions, if you happen to be on-site with another planning board member, make that information as your opinions available to other members of the planning board so that everyone has equal information and hopefully everyone's done their own site visits or at least gone by to recognize your issues.
As a perfect example, Mr. Angler tonight drove by, viewed the sites, could even get out, look, right? But John came back to the board and said, I went there, this is what I saw, right? So that...
Correct. That's fine.
That's appropriate, yeah.
Yeah, that's great, you know what I mean? That's like actually really helpful, right?
Yeah.
Because we all always have the time to go. So that would be an example of like, what is not a site visit but is encouraged.
Correct, absolutely. The MMA did clearly say that, and that was my next point, which is to say that any planning board member can do a drive-by of a property as long as there's no interaction between property owners, neighbors or abutters. So it's absolutely within our purview and is fully supported to go and view a property so that we're well-informed when it comes to deliberate together as a board. This, again, I'm just sharing what's presented by MMA, this is not my personal opinion at all. So, you know, they also referenced that every municipal... So, you know, they also reference that every municipality is required to have a public access officer who's responsible for filing of public records and being a point of contact for FOA questions and compliance. My understanding is that this person for Auburn is Rhonda Russell, but Audrey, I'll look to you for confirming that.
Yes, for planning matters, it's Rhonda.
Great. Any questions on what has been presented so far?
Clarification, for members that aren't aware of what sorts of things can be asked for, did they talk to you about the sorts of things that can be asked for?
In what context? From Rhonda, is that compliance officer, or?
Correct.
Hmm, no.
For freedom of access?
No.
Okay, so that everyone understands, emails, anything that's written? And you can also, they can also ask that you testify with regard to phone conversations as well, but, I mean, even something like texts, right? So, just so everyone is aware, those are all, there's no, there's no form of communication that sort of gets you out of, if you're discussing a topic...
Correct, so your question is about what constitutes a public record?
Yeah.
They did cover that, and they said that even the notes that you take during a meeting constitute a public record, you're not required to keep them, you can easily dispose of them, but that if they do exist, they do qualify as a public record. So they did go into some depth about the, what qualifies.
And I was worried that they just told you, "Oh, you have to worry about it, but don't..."
No, 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 they did go into that. Yeah, so that was really interesting, people that were really upset about the site visit conversation, because it seems that other boards have the process where one board member will go out with their CEO, their code enforcement officer, to go to a site, and that it's kind of standard practice, and they come back and they deliberate, and so there was some issue there. So, related to the decision-making process, there was another really contentious conversation about remote participation, so if you're a Planning Board member, you cannot Skype into a meeting, or, you know, FaceTime into a meeting, there's no mechanism for that kind of engagement on the board. The Maine State Legislature's reviewed this twice and has not approved it, because the Constitution does not allow it. So they don't have a formal statement, but they've reviewed it and struck it down twice. Your city charter could allow for this kind of, you know, participation, but it would be in violation of state law, just interesting to note. The, they also talked a lot about bias and conflict of interest, and the, under Maine State law, there are two facets of conflict of interest. They said you cannot have a financial interest in an application, either direct or indirect, meaning either money that you would directly receive, or that your property value, for example, would increase because of a neighbor's project. So, you have to avoid the appearance of impropriety, so anything that the general public would find concerning, even if you don't have a direct or indirect financial interest as well. And so the MMA said that it's incumbent upon Planning Board members and Board of Appeals members, who are also there, to state their own bias or conflict of interest, and that Planning Board members should speak up if they're concerned about another member's potential bias or conflict of interest. They talked about variances, yeah, go ahead.
So how, how would a recusal process work then?
You would recuse yourself, right, or, go ahead.
Did they explain it to you?
They did, they talked about how you would recuse, you would state your conflict of interest or your bias, I think there's an opportunity for the board to comment, but if you decide to recuse yourself, you're allowed to sit in the audience, and you can comment as a resident, but you can't participate in the conversation as part of the board.
You can't be at the board.
You cannot sit here, you have to sit in the audience.
And it would be specific to that item?
To that item, correct.
And actually, if I remember correctly, our individual policy even precludes the ability to approach during the public input section. So our policies are stricter then.
Interesting.
Yeah, which is the case, we're allowed to have policies that are as strict, or stricter. Did, so did they clarify for you guys what conflict of interest is? Specifically, there's like a number.
They did not provide a number.
So it's generally 10%, a 10% fiduciary interest, if I remember correctly, that's, that's what's...
It's, it's any perceived interest, they don't...
No, no, because there's the two, there's fiduciary conflict of interest, which is like driven by a fiduciary interest, and then there's the perceived. The only reason to make a distinction is that, for instance, we could say that we're going to do something, and it's something that will affect my property and, you know, double its value. I have a, obviously, a conflict of interest, right? So I would be required to recuse myself, the board can't relieve me of that duty. However, we could have, because I'm a teacher, right, we, in town, we could have something come before us that deals with the school, I would be morally and ethically obligated to let everyone know that I'm a teacher at the school, and this is the capacity at which I work, and at that point, then the board can say whether or not they believe that member can make a sound judgment or not, so. And I apologize for interrupting, but it's sort of interesting that there's two different, if it's financial, you don't have a choice, you have to recuse yourself, and if it's a perceived conflict of interest, then the board gets to decide.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. So regarding variances, some interesting points that they covered were that, you know, variances act as a safety valve to avoid unconstitutional taking of property, as Audrey mentioned in the training prior to the meeting tonight. So you must allow some reasonable use for that property, and there must be a constitutional issue at stake. So a variance is not a permit, if a variance is approved, the applicant will still need to get a permit from the code enforcement officer. And interestingly, they said that variances should not be used to skirt ordinance, if there are many variances being approved that are related to the same ordinance, then the ordinance should be amended. And so I thought that overall, the training was pretty good, I think that the decision-making process and the variance conversation were pretty rushed because of the previous contentious conversation around site visits, and, you know, Skyping into meetings, which it sounds like some folks are doing across the state. But I thought that future trainings on these items would be really valuable, and I thank Audrey for offering to do trainings for us prior to meetings. I'm happy to share the slide deck that they used, the MMA, I thought that it was pretty helpful. And the last point that I want to share was just that they also were pushing the MMA Annual Conference, or their convention, that happens in early October. The, the theme of the conference for this year is called Built to Last, so they were really pushing participation by Planning Board members and Board of Appeals members. And so that's something that we can consider having one or more representatives from the Planning Board attend, it sounded like it'd be pretty valuable.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, I was looking forward to that, yeah.
So I would indeed appreciate distribution of that slide deck, please, and how often does MMA do this one?
Well, I'm glad you asked. They do have an upcoming one Thursday, September 12th, at Black Bear Inn in Orno, and they have another one Thursday, December 5th, at the Maine Municipal Association in Augusta. So the, again, the city will pay for that. There is a big fat binder that's on the, that's, all of that information is available on the MMA website, and you, as Planning Board members, can sign in and create your own account to MMA and get that as a PDF. I can get a PDF and send it to you, but you are also welcome, as Planning Board members, to sign into MMA, it's, it's pretty simple to get your own password, et cetera.
Is this available, so that we could pick it up downstairs?
You want to put a rental card in it?
No, no, like go to the library, make a, make a hard copy for ourselves and bring it back?
Library card.
You can have a library card, yeah.
Can you send me the info for being able to get that?
The MMA, yeah, sure.
And the other thing that, that I, I got from that whole meeting was that, one, it was basically Robert's Rules, is how this whole thing works on, and then, two, shoreline zoning, they hit shoreline zoning a lot, and because we do have a lot of rivers and lakes, I took interest into that, so, it was good.
It was taught by lawyers, so, just so, so you know, it was mostly the legalities of what, what we do. So, I mean, they covered things like right title and interest, ex parte communications, what constitutes arbitrary and capricious decision-making.
Audrey, can I ask you, ex parte is always a big one. Do you want to share with the board what you guys sort of...
I'd be interested to listen to what you guys got from it, as far as your understanding.
That's always a big one, I think.
Of what?
Ex parte communications is always sort of a, a topic that escapes people, and it sort of catches people by surprise sometimes, so.
So I, just to summarize it real quick, but, but I would, if you guys want to just share with me, or share with everyone what you, your perception of what it means, that's also cool, so, I'll, I'll just chime in if...
I'm looking back to my notes.
Uh-oh. Well, so essentially, it, you, you can't really discuss the merits of a project outside of this meeting. This is a public meeting, so if you met at the grocery store and started talking about this project, anything that's going to be coming before you as a body, and made decisions, or judgments, or strategies, or something that was really talking about the merits of the project, like, "Oh, that project sucks," or whatever you might want to say, or "It's a great project, I'm going to support it," you're essentially having an ex parte discussion regarding the merits of the project outside of the public forum. And that's not allowed. So all discussion regarding the merits of the project are supposed to occur in this public realm that is broadcast and open to the public. So even if you, you met after the meeting, a public forum, particularly with these items that are continuance items, you should be very careful about making sure you're over a beer, you're not going further into your decision-making process without all the members of the Planning Board being present in a public environment. So, and it can, it can also occur for policies, for anything else, if you're conferring with another decision-making body, you know, and another decision-maker regarding the merits and strategies and content of something that will have bearing on somebody over here, then, and it can be perceived as ex parte communications. So it's a little tricky, I mean, it's, it's particularly in small towns.
And I'll, I'll throw this example out, this is one that always catches people, so, um...
Oh.
I will use my own example, actually, okay? So when we were deliberating the Ag Zone at one of those meetings, I received a message from a friend who, and the message was, was quite benign, it was something to the effect of like, you know, did the people listen to what I had, what I had to say, or something to that effect. However, I did not know what that message said until after the meeting, because that is when I checked it, because had I checked that during the meeting, that's ex parte communications. So it goes even, it's not even like, even just being in this room, it's like, it's like if, if, so if someone is texting me and I'm checking, and it's having a bearing, it's discussing the topic at hand, or even, let's say, we're passing notes to each other, right? Because it's not public, it's in the public space, but it's not accessed by the public, it's the council's ex parte communications, and that's, those are things that, that, that's why I wanted to stop and sort of touch on...
In that example, sorry, just to confirm, because you were just saying that it's ex parte communications, whether it's happening in the meeting or outside of the meeting, so in that example, is it still ex parte?
Well, in that case, it's because it's occurring between, let's say, two people that isn't occurring with everybody. And, and, and another example, I mean, let's just say, between now and the next meeting, you get stopped by someone at the grocery store, or wherever you happen to be, and they want to talk about this project, and they want to share their concerns or their issues, or their facts. That's them sharing information with one person, and not everyone is being party to it, and you don't know whether it's factual, it's someone's opinion, it's something else. And so it gets a little tricky, where you really shouldn't be listening to that. I mean, technically, you should be able to say, "Well, I can't really discuss this project outside of that," because it'd be very tempting to respond and have a conversation, right, and share your opinions, but you can't do that.
And the easiest way to, to address something like that is, because that will happen, it will happen. People are going to talk to you about something, and it is, it is, if people are asking you questions about information that is on the public record, you may answer those questions, right? So that's not what we're talking about. If they want to say like, "What happened at the meeting?" What did, what, that's, 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 you're just restating the public record. But if they're coming at you with their opinions and they want your response, the easiest thing to do, because sometimes you can't avoid it, is just to come back to the board and say, "But, you know, previous to the meeting, a community member stopped me, they shared the following concerns with me," right? And now it's no, like, now it's, it is part of the public record, and, and because, you know, you were smart, you didn't have a discussion with them, you don't have to explain the discussion, you just, you share the concern, so.
Better yet, encourage them to attend the meeting.
Yes.
Well, and, and here's the other example, so I mentioned that, hey, you, you guys, if you, the public record's open, if we get comments and letters, we share them with you all at the same time, and it, it becomes part of the public record, and it's, it's something, it's not just one conversation that's occurring between two people. So that's kind of where you get into that definition. So it, it's complicated, but it can be fairly simple, so. If you want to go to the next one, just let me know, it's, it's on the city.
Yeah, well, it sounds like...
And we'll put a checkout card there for the binder.
Sounds like it was definitely worthwhile going, so.
Yeah, what day is the next one?
Hey, you can't go again. You only get one off.
How about this conference thing, that's, that's what I'd like to go to.
Yeah, I know, it does look really interesting, it looks like there are a lot of good breakout sessions that would be valuable for us to attend, so.
Is it possible?
Yeah, I can give you that, I can circulate that. And I don't know if it's in the budget for, you know, what, if we could all go, or if we would have one representative, or how that works, but you let us know if that's...
I can point out, yeah.
Look, we ask for so little around here, I feel like we ought to be able to go. They'll send us all to Build Maine, you know? Of course, that's free, I think.
We're on a volunteer basis here, you know, you got to give us something.
I'll see what I can do.
They give us cookies, they give us cookies and coffee when there's small sessions.
An eight-ounce bottle of water.
Hey, that's all I could find, man.
That comes from Pennsylvania.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your willingness to, to share out, that was great, good stuff, good stuff.
All right.
Planning Board, other items for discussion, I met with Audrey, there was nothing that I wanted to bring up sort of immediately, given the time, I think.
Okay, well, I just have a couple of, a couple of items that popped up really quickly. We have interest in the church that we own at the St. Louis Church, so we have interest in, by a buyer, to do an adaptive reuse project for a community facility, they are still looking at a potential place of worship, but they're also thinking of potentially office space, community center, potentially a cafe. They'd be looking to bring a project before you, potentially in September, if they go forward with the sale. I think they, they really wanted to just let you know, give you a heads up, and put that on, on your radar, for the adaptive reuse of the church, which is currently owned by the City of Auburn. Anything you want to comment around that, or suggestions or communications?
Is he coming in September with a complete application, or is he coming into September? So there, there have been times where people will come in and they will talk to us about with their project ahead of time to get a feeling of...
Yeah, we don't, we don't know where, what he's planning to come in September with at this juncture, the sale is not final, I think he's, he's still specing out options. So the other item that has popped up, we've had three different pursuits of solar farms in the city. So they're looking at industrial, they're looking at farming, or agricultural land, and, but we have had pretty strong interest in developing solar farms. So that being, which is, which is great. So we wanted to introduce the concept of adding a solar farm as a use in the Ag Zone, whether or not it'd be a special exception, or if you'd want to develop standards around that. There are a lot of solar standards out there, for solar farm standards, California's had had them on the books for a couple of decades, or at least a decade. So there, there are standards available for those things, but we wanted to push this by you to see whether or not you would be amenable to that as a use, an appropriate use in the Ag Zone.
Excuse me, were they, I guess my question would be, they've got a couple other places in Maine that are currently utilizing that in the, in what would appear to be an Ag Zone, I can think, the two that come to mind most readily is Colby and then the, I can't think of the company that escapes me now, the larger, Chum, Chumro.
Chumro.
They have the solar farm up in Pittsfield going into Kanan area. Are there any regulations that they've done, or, you know, anything that we can see from their usage?
Hmm, no, it's a good idea. Hmm, no, it's a good idea. This has basically just been shopped, and we were asked to bring this forward, because if, if it is, if the interest in activity continues from the market, from these inquiries, we would want to act quickly to move this amendment to the Agricultural and Resource Protection District forward through you and the city council if we found that it was not controversial.
I, speaking for myself, I would also like us to have a discussion about, so when you have a solar farm, you're essentially making, you know, you've got a grid that's tied to the grid, like that's what you've got, you know? But I think it's reasonable to have sort of like the urban microgrid sort of deal going on, such that you can have solar farms that are, that are urban solar farms, that aren't solar panels out in a field, but are a collective of homeowners who decide to create a co-op. And so I personally would like the discussion to be broader than the ag zone, and say, are there other places we think something like that could...
Sorry, is the interest specifically in the ag zone by these pursuits, or are they willing to look at any land? I'm just interested in why the ag zone in particular.
I imagine the economics work out quite...
Yeah, it started out, it started out as the industrial, and then it kind of went to ag, because it's, you know, what, with some wide-open spaces. Do you know any more about that, Megan, in terms of why there? But I think there's some general business. It might be that, it might be the value of the land in terms of the price per acre.
Yeah, I mean, it's taxed, you know, something like down to $2,000 an acre.
But we are looking at something on the landfill, actually, on our landfill.
Cool.
For a city, for a city project.
Yeah.
Which is ag-zoned, you know?
Specifically regarding the idea of solar farms being approved uses in the ag zone, renewable energy generation plants and arrays and stuff are industrial developments. And while renewable energy is good for a lot of reasons and has positive social and environmental benefits, we should consider, because this is going to conflict with some of the goals that we have been laying out over past months. So it's not sort of one and done in my mind that this is an acceptable use in the ag zone. I think we should think through that a little bit. And then responding to Mr. Seer, is there a zoning issue with distributed generation and this idea of...
I don't, I don't know. There may be, there may not be. I guess if everyone was just individually tied into the, into the wider grid, there'd be no issue. People are allowed to put solar panels on their homes, but if there were, say, a co-op that wanted to create a grid within a grid, that might be coming in. I don't know. I guess the point is, I think, I think it's a discussion worthwhile having, you know, to allow for those sorts of things to be discussed, at least.
To John's point, I know that there are many farmers in the Midwest that have figured out a way to coexist really well with solar farms, where they lease out their land, and then they figure out a configuration with the company they're leasing it to, so they can still use it for agricultural purposes while also having the solar on site. I don't think that the two are necessarily...
I just think that it's easy, it's easy now with today's economics to be like, oh, this is a great idea. And then five, 10 years from now, when the economics shift, and all of a sudden, we've opened the gates to a competing use that's, you know, we just need to think through that. And if there's already models developed in other areas, then, you know...
Sure.
Yeah, I think one of the things you have to be careful about is land value. So I think my uncle leases to, for wind generation, and it's much more lucrative for him to lease that like 300 by 300-foot little plot than it is for him to farm the entire like 100-acre field that the wind was in, so. So, yeah, we got to, we got to think about sort of those impacts, too.
But then again, if you have like St. Louis Church, and you've got all that roof, you know, great place for it, so.
Yeah. So there's lots of options. I just, I wanted to let you know that that was some interest that we were asked to shop with you. I think one thing we can look forward to, kind of moving to the next item, but we can circle back if we have to, the timber harvest shoreline zone. We have the participation of the Conservation Commission for that discussion at the next meeting. So from a scheduling perspective, we're going to try to have that at a schedule, a specifically scheduled time during the public hearing process, so that the Conservation Commission and the forester, who is going to be here from the state to answer our questions, is here at the same time. And it might be an opportunity with the Conservation Commission to have this discussion about the ag and Research Protection District and this concept of solar farms and their view. That's just a suggestion, since it would be technically a joint meeting with the Conservation Commission for the duration of, at least the shoreline and timber harvest conversation. So I guess we can talk more about the...
That sounds good to me. I personally am going to be out next month, but I love the idea of solar energy. I just want to make sure that we would incorporate that in a way that doesn't build structural conflict with the other use priorities.
Well, and to ease your fears, I don't think it would be one and done. I mean, I know people were hoping that we'd give feedback on the proposed ag zone amendments in one meeting, and we took two workshops and what, at least another meeting to do that. So I think we've got a pretty good track record of making sure we feel...
Get the cake baked, right?
Appraise of the information before we go shooting from the hip.
Yeah, research and due diligence.
We've done that multiple times with the ag zone. We've done that multiple times over the years with the ag zone.
So that's all, that's all we have?
Oh, the draft agriculture committee language.
So I, we don't have the status of that. Katie, do you have any knowledge about what's happening with that committee?
Yeah, there's a meeting that's happening tomorrow evening that John and I are going to be attending, and it'll be also attended by Councilwoman Lasagna, Councilman Young, help me out, two other individuals as well, I think, from the community to kind of talk about what the next step should be, and to review the specific proposals that were made during the joint meeting with the city council and Planning Board. So that's tomorrow.
Peter Creighton will be there as well.
Thank you.
So you guys are still kind of figuring out the animal?
Yes, exactly. And this would be the first meeting that would take place.
It's the first meeting.
Oh.
Yeah. We have yet to sit down with these people.
Yeah.
The first meeting of the committee to determine the committee?
Yep.
Oh, ma'am.
Yeah, it's like a subcommittee of the committee.
Oh, boy.
Well, and to piggyback on that, though, I was talking to Peter about this, and he said the plan is, once it gets out of that subcommittee, it will go to the committee who's actually supposed to be creating the language. And then that proposed language would end up coming to us, too, for a full input from the board, so. So look forward to that and be thinking about sort of what are the things you want, you want to see, or you think are important for the board to have sort of, in regard to support from that, from that committee. Public comment?
One final thing that I mentioned before the meeting started. I happen upon the situation, code enforcement thought it would be appropriate to bring up eventually in a Planning Board meeting. Apparently, there's been, this has come up multiple times, it almost happened to me, that investors purchase a property, there is a non-conforming apartment in it, and they're not able to make full use of it, and they can't get the building, that final unit added to the formal rolls. So for example, someone buys a five-unit, however, the fifth unit was an illegally added apartment, and so it has to be used as a four-unit, even though, for example, a fire escape could be added, very simply. And so code enforcement and economic development asked me to bring that up, because it conforms pretty nicely to the comprehensive plan, and wanted me to contact a handful of investors that it's happened to recently, because I'm sure, as people have noticed, a lot of dilapidated houses have been snatched up pretty quickly over the last, especially like six months. And there's a lot of development going on in a lot of those older buildings. And it would, it would help support the long-term goal of increased density in town. So, anyway, something to think about.
So what we've run into, just as a quick response, is the way the ordinance is currently written, it poses some challenges for the square footage on the ground with the, you know, because you have these like 6,000-square-foot homes on a 4,000-square-foot lot or something.
Yeah. So is that, are you asking us to consider sort of thinking, brainstorming a solution?
Yeah, having a discussion about it, a more formal discussion, especially when the docket is significantly lighter. I don't think it's something that's necessarily pressing.
Yeah, and I think, I think maybe what would help is if you, if you would be willing to find some of those locations where those have occurred, we can look at the standards for that zone and what those obstacles are, and we can address it like by those zones, because it probably has to do with whatever the historic housing stock is there.
Most of it's in the low, is in the urban residential and multifamily zone areas of the actual, like downtown.
Right, okay.
So.
Is there anyone else that would like to, is there anything else that someone thinks? I'm sorry, I'm losing my words.
Let's get out of here.
Okay, before we go, though...
All right. You got one, you got another, you got some paperwork, so enjoy taking out pages of your ordinance and inserting the replacement pages. These are mostly from the marijuana ordinance that was adopted, so it may look like there aren't any changes, but it's because they are small changes that are an added use to specific zones. So we do get these periodic, as soon as, as soon as there's a change to the ordinance, we try to keep your ordinance as up-to-date as possible, so that you aren't kind of like missing the info.
Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Clearly seconded. Oh, those in favor? All right, meeting is adjourned.
I hate sitting down for this long.